I'd like to call the June 15th Planning Commission meeting to order. Could you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Present.
Commissioner Marsters?
Present.
Commissioner Silverman?
Here.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Present.
Chair Gutierrez?
Present.
Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future or Commission's agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anybody here to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, moving along. Approval of minutes. Did anybody see any corrections or modifications?
I have no corrections and am prepared to make a motion.
Any corrections?
Approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Public hearing, the procedure for the public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice. The public notice or written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speakers form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the Commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist staff in preparing minutes. And our only agenda item is Meridian 25 Office Project. Laura?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and members of the public. I'm Laura Russell, Senior Planner. This evening, the Planning Commission is holding a public hearing to review Meridian 25, an office complex proposed on Industrial Road at the quarter of Branston Road. Some aspects of this project require approval by the City Council. For those items, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Council. This includes actions related to CEQA, which is the California Environmental Quality Act, and also actions related to the plan development. Since the project includes a zoning map amendment, that aspect also has to be reviewed by the City Council. Other aspects of the project can be approved by the Planning Commission. Those include the design review, tentative parcel map, grading and dirt hall certificate, protected tree removal permit, and the transportation demand management plan. If the Planning Commission chooses to approve these entitlements, they would not go into effect until the planned development zoning is approved by the City Council and also goes The Planning Commission held a study session on May 31st and reviewed the project pretty extensively at that time. So there's a number of materials that are included within the staff report that were included as attachments, so that would all be available to members of the public. But the focus this evening is to pick up on some of the new materials that have been provided since that study session, as well as answering a number of questions that came up at that time, as well as from members of the public. So here's a slide talking about some of the new materials that have been provided. So since the study session, the comment period for the mitigated negative declaration has ended, so there are additional materials related to CEQA this evening. The first is the errata sheet, and this is because the applicant has been coordinating with the EPA for the cleanup of the hazardous materials on the site. So this section of the MND has been updated, so that's a separate errata sheet that's been provided to you in the pocket as attachment number six. Next is a memo that discusses the comments that we have received on the mitigated negative declaration. There's just a few that we received in writing, as well as the verbal comments that we received at the meetings. And that memo concludes that there are no new significant effects identified in those comment letters. The third item that's new related to CEQA is the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. So what that includes is basically the same content that was included within the mitigated negative declaration in a different format, and additional information about how those mitigation measures would be implemented. So that's generally the same as what the Commission has seen before, except that that information related to the hazardous materials cleanup has been updated. Also new this evening for the Planning Commission is the questions and answers document, and that's attachment eight to the staff report. And we'll be referring to that as we kind of go through the presentation this evening. So when we talk about the question numbers, that's the document we're referring to. And we tried to provide some detailed answers that were gathered from the city staff, from the consultant team, as well as from the applicant, in order to provide a lot of information to the Planning Commission and to the public on those questions that came up. And finally, new this evening is a detailed public comment section, and that's attachment 13 to your staff report. It includes a number of support letters, some letters, some emails of concern, and I'll touch on that just a little bit more, but that's the big packet at the back of the staff report. So I'll talk just a little bit again about the project for any members of the public that might be new to the discussion. But as the Planning Commission knows, the project site is adjacent to Highway 101. It's .7 miles to the Caltrain Station and .4 miles to Laurel Street using the Arroyo The site is 7.9 acres. The general plan designation and zoning are general, commercial, industrial. It's currently developed with six one-story buildings and surface parking. The current building area of those six buildings is 134,187...wait, 134,000 square feet. We'll get the numbers mixed up. All of the existing buildings and the improvements associated that would be demolished with the project. And here again is the site plan. You'll recall that the parking structure is located across the back of the site, adjacent to Highway 101, with the two office buildings located along Industrial Road, landscaping throughout the middle and across the perimeter of the site. The office buildings are proposed to be six stories with a total floor area of 528,000 square feet. They have contemporary architectural style. The landscaping plan covers 23% of the site. I wanted to note that that's specifically the planted area, does not include the associated walkways, courtyards, and paving. Those are accounted for separately. The landscape plan includes 150 new trees. All of those are 24-inch box size or larger. Wanted to spend a moment talking about parking, as this was a question that came up for members of the public, as well as from the Planning Commission. For larger office developments such as this, the municipal code requires one parking space per 350 square feet of floor area. This is actually a standard that was added at the time of the zoning code update in 2011. So it is a recent standard. It is consistent with many other communities for larger office projects that have...that are somewhat near transit but not immediately adjacent. So if you had an immediately adjacent location, you would have a lower parking requirement, but this is considered an up-to-date standard in a good planning best practice. The applicant is proposing 1,510 spaces, which exactly meets that requirement. As you know, the code also requires bicycle parking, and I wanted to spend a moment on this as well, because I think there might have been some confusion on this. The code requires both short-term spaces, which we can really think of as parking spaces, bike parking spaces that are in racks or less secure, and then long-term spaces, which are secure, so they're within locked enclosures, within buildings, within bike lockers, to really help those people that are using it as their commute mode, so that it's secure long-term parking. The applicant...
Laura, can you define the length of time for short-term and long-term parking, bike parking?
The code defines long-term as for employees for eight hours.
Okay.
And then short-term is for visitors, messengers, people that are visiting the site.
Okay.
So the applicant is proposing kind of just over what the municipal code requires for bike parking. And then separately, they are going to be providing 30 bicycles, not bike parking spaces, but actual bikes, as part of their TDM plan. So I think there was a little bit of confusion about that last time, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear. So they can talk more about the TDM plan, but there'll be actual bikes parked on the site, in addition to the city's requirement for parking.
I thought there was also a requirement that the folks who occupy the building have to allow bicycles in the offices themselves as well. Is that right?
That is not a code requirement, but it's an encouraged practice, and it is part of their TDM plan. So they are proposing that.
So they are required to do it? I mean, because it's part of their TDM plan?
If the TDM plan and project are approved, then yes, they would be required to do that.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not a code requirement, but it would be required with the project.
But to the extent that folks were concerned that there was insufficient bike parking, it seems in some ways irrelevant if everyone can bring their bike into their office.
Yes, I think that's a very good point, and I think it's a very common practice in technology offices for those people that commute by bike, that have very expensive bikes, to bring them all the way up into their workspace. So that has become a standard practice for bike commuters that would be accommodated in this project, both in terms of the site plan, which has a space for bikes to come right into the building, the floor plans, as well as the commitments in the TDM plan to allow employees to do that. So we've talked about this quite a bit, but the project includes community benefits that would be subject to a development agreement on Commercial Street, Old County Road, as well as improved crosswalks immediately adjacent to the project site. The kind of new question that came out of that conversation is why Commercial Street? So people have been asking, you know, why was that selected? So there's a number of reasons. Some staff and the applicant worked on this together to come up with what we thought was the best solution. And in general, staff is very supportive of this location for a number of reasons. It does line up with the southern portion of the project site, because it's the two mirror images, and so it is immediately adjacent to one of the buildings. I mean, maybe not to the other, but it is immediately adjacent to one of the buildings. It would be a safer and more pleasant place to walk and bicycle, especially after the improvements are completed. Branston has heavier industrial uses, and we know that at least a couple of those uses are going to be there for quite some time and have made recent investments in their property. So we would expect that to remain the condition on Branston for the foreseeable future. As opposed to on Commercial, we have heard some indications that there could be redevelopment of some of those properties into what could potentially be a less heavy industrial condition. So that was part of the thinking, as well as really leveraging other investments that the community has made. So you're familiar with the Arroyo Street Undercrossing and those pedestrian improvements at that corner. That was a grant-funded project. And then also the East Side Connect improvements. This gives us a chance to extend those. So we're always trying to leverage the investments that the city has already made and make a more continuous bicycle and pedestrian network. Additionally, the intention is really as a community benefit for it to serve the community and the whole neighborhood, and also the project site. So we do find a real opportunity in the future for other users of downtown to get to the East Side, and East Side folks to get to downtown on Commercial Street. Also during the study session, we received a really excellent question that came up about the general plan build-out. And this is number...question number 10 in the question and answer document. And so the general plan quantifies the development that is likely to occur, and that's not really intended as a cap or as a limit, but the general plan sounds kind of obvious, but is general in nature. It's for planning purposes. It's to get an overall picture of what's likely to develop, so that, do you know what I mean? We can kind of have a sense of what's coming, but because of market forces, we don't always know which sites are going to develop and which ones are not. It's important, but it's a guiding principle, and it really, again, is about likely development. The general plan includes the language that's on the left side of your slide here. I took that right out of the general plan. And so the section that we were talking about says again that it's what's likely to occur under the general plan. And then this is the table that came up at the last meeting. And so I put the circle there around the office area, and this table expects 572,006 square feet of office development, if we do the subtraction and carry that over. And so just to kind of illustrate the capacity that the general plan has in terms of that likely development, we can compare that to the proposed project, which is the figures on the right. So we take the proposed project, and then they get the credit for the existing office that was already on the site. So the project net office square footage is 460,000, and so that leaves a pretty considerable amount of room in that likely development in the general plan, about 111,000 square feet. The number of office projects that have come forward under the general plan is much smaller than that. You know, it's a few thousand square feet at the time so far, so the community is not anywhere near that 111,000 square feet. So the project, as I mentioned, includes the request for the planned development zoning. So this is a reminder, since there's been a lot of conversation about that. And the project complies with all of the development standards in the GCI zoning district except for height, so the request is to change the zoning from GCI to planned development. So these are the proposed heights of the project, and I have a couple more slides to help everybody visualize what these heights mean. It's about 87 feet to the top of the parapet, so that's the top of the building for folks that don't use the architectural terminology, right? That's like kind of visually where the building ends, is the top of the parapet. And then the roof screen extends beyond that to 97 feet. We specifically asked the applicant to integrate the roof screen into the architecture of the building, so that it wouldn't stand out like some of the other roof screens we've seen on some of the other office buildings that maybe would not meet the community's expectations. So here, the orange line is 97 feet to the top of the roof screen, and the yellow line is 87 feet to the top of the parapet. So this is kind of trying to visualize it from the corner. This is the industrial and Branston corner rendering. Then I provided to you the roof plans. Remember, these are mirror image buildings, so this would be the one on the right away from the corner. But the orange is showing where the roof screen is located, so this is the portion that would be proposed to have the 97-foot height, and you can see that it's kind of centered onto the building. So they've done that, and you can see all those little boxes. That's kind of representing that mechanical and AC equipment that would be clustered towards the middle of the building to reduce the visibility of it. And then the yellow line around the rest of the roof is the 87-feet height. So I wanted to make sure everybody was clear kind of what those heights are and what portion of the roof we're talking about. Also as follow-up to a question, here's the information on the other projects within the last 20 years that have exceeded the height in the base zoning districts. So these are the different projects. They're all planned developments. Wheeler used height exceptions, which are allowed within the municipal code for very specific things in the mixed-use district. But perhaps the most comparable one is the Pampf project, given its context along Highway 101 and its planned development status. And you can see there that it has a pretty significant roof screen on the Pampf building, so the roof screen actually takes up the majority of the roof area, and that reaches So here are a couple other questions that I wanted to highlight that came out of the study session comments and directly out of your questions and answers document. There's a question about the possibility of housing impact fees or kind of a connection to this project. The City Council has formed a subcommittee on housing that is looking at a number of different options. So it may be possible in the future that the city could consider a fee, but if something like that was done in the future, it would not be retroactively applied to this project. There's also a question about traffic impact fees. And again, I think we mentioned this, but the estimate was $1.7 million in traffic impact fees. And the TIF fees are required for all development projects that result in an increase in the number of trips. And so that's actually not the same as anything that's considered significant under CEQA. So there's an analysis that goes with the traffic impact fee plan that identifies a number of places in the city that the city wants to make traffic improvements. And so it's a different criteria than what we're looking at under CEQA.
Sorry to interrupt, Laura. So this $1.7 million just goes for traffic mitigation within the city of San Carlos and does not involve the 101 interchange at all?
Correct.
Okay. Later on, I'm going to ask where that money comes from.
Okay. The traffic impact fee plan has a detailed list, and we can talk about it more. I've got the plan, a list of improvements in the community, and estimates the amount of money it would take to make those improvements, and then kind of separates that out through the magic of traffic engineering math into the trips that are generated by different projects. And then that money goes in the traffic impact fee pot and then is spent through the City Council budgeting process in order to physically do those projects that have already been identified. So it has to be connected.
Okay.
Okay, so turning a little bit to community outreach, the attachment in the staff report again has the summary of the outreach that has been done by the applicant, as well as the city meetings that have taken place, including Economic Development Advisory Committee, Transportation and Circulation Commission, or sorry, Commission both, and as well as the study session that the Planning Commission held. Staff, of course, sent the customary notices. We send it to 500 feet of the project site, owners and occupants. Within the staff report, there's 25 letters of support from individuals, a support letter from the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, two emails with concerns. Those concerns are related primarily to height, to traffic, and to the idea of a significant change in the community with an office project of this size. There's a number of additional letters that were provided to the Planning Commission since the staff report has gone out. So those were made available to the Planning Commission via PDF email this afternoon and also provided to you on the dais. So I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca Ald of Lanfair-Gregory. She's the city's environmental review consultant. So she's going to talk a little bit more about the questions and the answers that have come up related to the environmental review and then to traffic, and then I'll be back to close up the staff presentation.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Ald of Lanfair-Gregory, primary report preparer for the environmental document. I wanted to start talking about the environmental document that was circulated and the review that was performed. So as you know, we circulated what's called a mitigated negative declaration, or MND. Governing law, which is CEQA or the California Environmental Quality Act, an MND along with an environmental impact report, or EIR, are two names for the packages in which the environmental review can be packaged and then circulated for review. Because we did an MND package, there seems to have been the impression that an analysis of environmental impacts was not performed. That was not the case, and I just wanted to go over that really quickly here. So which package is chosen for the analysis does not determine the scope of the analysis. Conversely, under CEQA, it's the conclusions of the analysis that in fact determine what the appropriate package is. So if, for instance, the environmental analysis determines that there will be significant new impacts that cannot be reduced below significance levels, then an EIR is the required package for the environmental analysis. That was not the case here. Based on the analysis of project impacts, there were determined to be no new significant project impacts that cannot be reduced through the implementation of mitigation. And therefore, under CEQA, a mitigated negative declaration is the appropriate CEQA document. I wanted to be sure to stress that a full analysis of all CEQA topic areas was conducted for the project, including a full traffic impact analysis. This...well, Transportation Impact Analysis is its full name, or TIA. This TIA is included as an attachment to the MND. If an EIR had been the appropriate package, it would have been included as an attachment to the EIR. There would have been no change to the scope of the analysis of project impacts or to the conclusions of the traffic impact analysis. Okay. So I also wanted to go over some of the questions that have come up a few times and make sure that we had good answers for those questions. Existing trip use and the credit for the existing buildings on the site is one of those. It's answered in detail in the questions and answers document under question 18. I'm not going to go into that much detail here, but just to summarize, project potential trips from the existing buildings were calculated using Institute of Transportation Engineer Rates, or ITE rates. These are industry standard and used in the vast majority of environmental... These are industry standard and used in the vast majority of environmental analyses in California. They're based upon the monitoring of multiple spaces of the same types of use and are considered representative of anticipated likely trip generation of such building space. In particular, because the building spaces on the site have a flexibility in the specific type of use that could occur in them and have a high vacancy rate currently, the use of the ITE rates in this circumstance was considered representative of what would be anticipated to happen, a likely trip generation of the existing building space if the project were not to be approved. So there's also a question of what, even if you use the ITE rates, what is the appropriate ITE rate to use? And specifically, it has come up in relation to the ITE rate that is titled as shopping center. Shopping center is a general retail rate. It's used in situations where there are multiple types of retail that have shared vehicle access and parking. So when they're combined into what would be considered a center. Or when a particular retail use is not better defined by a more specific use under a different ITE rate. So I'm going to read you real quick part of the definition here of the shopping center use under ITE. Shopping centers, including neighborhood centers, community centers, regional centers, and super-regional centers, were surveyed for this land use. Some of these uses contain non-merchandising facilities, such as office buildings, movie theaters, restaurants, post offices, banks, health clubs, and recreational facilities. The centers ranged in size from 1,700 to 2.2 million-feet gross leasable area. So that is general enough to include the project site and the buildings that are there now. And I've included here on the slide what the shopping center rate is for the PM peak hour, 3.71, and that's what was used in the analysis. The more specific rates tend to be higher, so if you look at a particular type of use, you tend to find a higher trip rate. Some of the existing or historic uses on the site have included auto part sales, which has a higher trip rate, so it would result in higher trips. Arts and craft store, again, higher trip rate, or building materials stores, which also have a higher trip rate. So the use of ITE rates is appropriate under CEQA, and the use of this particular ITE rate is accurate to characterize the use of the building space on the site if the project were not to be approved. So another question that's come up multiple times has to do with the general plan and the ability to reach the conclusion that the project would be within the impacts assessed under the general plan. So again, this is addressed in detail in the question and answers document under question 10. Laura went over a little bit about the difference between what would be allowed under the general plan and what is assumed or analyzed in the EIR, because of course, not every empty site will be developed and not every developed site will be redeveloped. So a reasonable assumption is made to characterize the potential impacts during the build-out of a general plan. Those assumptions are detailed in the general plan EIR analysis in such a way that a subsequent project, when it's proposed, doesn't need to conform to all the specific assumptions, but rather needs to determine that it's with the impacts assessed. The project is within Planning Area 7, and I've included on this slide from the general plan the figure showing the different planning areas. In the context of the traffic study, Planning Areas 7, 8, and 9 have been mentioned. As noted, the project is fully within Planning Area 7. These planning areas were drawn from a planning perspective. They are expected to have different characters, and they have somewhat different rules about what is and isn't allowed to be developed in those areas. They were not drawn from an environmental perspective. They are not intended to be the areas which contribute to certain impacts. The reason these three planning areas were mentioned, all in the traffic study, is because they are the three planning areas along Industrial Road south of Holly Street. So the trips from these areas, and specifically the employment-generating types of uses, because they have trips that go the same directions, would contribute to the same impacts in those areas. So the red line I've added along Industrial to demonstrate that here. However, even saying that, Planning Area 7 and the assumptions for that area, including the number of trips from that area, the project would be within those assumptions. So again, that's included under question 10 in greater detail, but to give you an example, the PM peak hour additional trips assumed in Planning Area 7 was 1,923 trips. The peak hour trips from just employment-generating uses, such as the project, was 747 trips. The project itself, the net additional PM peak hour trips, was 364, well within what was assumed from this planning area. Even if the project was being proposed on a site where there was nothing currently developed and no credit for existing uses, the PM peak hour trip generation would be 725 compared to 747, already assumed specifically for employment-generating uses, just in that So I focused on the questions that have come up multiple times, but there were additional questions that have come up, and I just wanted to point out that those have also been addressed in the questions and answers document and go over them very briefly. So question four, related to environmental cleanup of the site, of contaminations on the site, and goes into more detail about the fact that EPA has been brought in on the oversight of the cleanup during the construction period, and that minor revisions have been made, as Laura mentioned, to the document to update it with now the inclusion of EPA and the language of the mitigation for that reason as well. Question 15, there were some questions about utilities and whether those have been analyzed. And as mentioned before, we analyzed all topic areas under CEQA for this project, including utilities. Utility plans have been prepared by a civil engineer and were reviewed by engineers at the city's Public Works Department and are supported by various technical documentation that was also reviewed. Question 16, there were some questions about whether carbon dioxide was analyzed, which is part of greenhouse gas emissions. It was indeed analyzed in the environmental document, and that question, the answer to it includes more detail about that. Emergency services and the project's relation to emergency access has been also questioned, and that's addressed under question 19 in the environmental document. And the project would not substantially interfere with environmental services. So that's all that I have to respond to questions that have come up. If there are additional questions, we can respond to those during Q and A.
Can I ask one real quick question? So if you go back one slide, project area nine.
Yes.
Okay. If I remember correctly, from the earlier or from one of the things, it suggested that 10% of the trips were going to come from project area nine. Can you explain that a little bit better?
Sure. So it was actually a breakdown, 70, Planning Area 7, 25, Planning Area 9, 5, Planning Area 8. So that breakdown is actually answering not the question of whether the project is within what was assumed in the general plan, but more a subsequent question of, did we appropriately consider and account for what subsequent development would occur after this project happens? So that particular question in the Q and A, question 10, includes a breakdown table of what the general plan analysis assumed for each of these planning areas. And the traffic engineers, in coordination with the traffic folks at the city, considered, okay, if we use a big chunk of Planning Area 7 for the project from what we assumed in the general plan, what does the future development look like? And there may be additional development now in Planning Area 7 than we assumed previously that we would have attributed to 8 or 9. So they readjusted a little bit what the additional future development would look like and between those three areas, 7, 8, and 9, where that would occur. So that 70%, 25%, 5% was actually how much was subtracted out of the future growth in those three areas. But the entire trips from the project were added to Area 7. And what that's telling you in a way that ended up being a bit confusing was that we looked at the addition of the project plus what was assumed in the general plan, plus even a little bit more in Planning Area 7. We didn't subtract the whole thing out of there. Rather, we readjusted between those three planning areas.
I'm still a bit confused about...
Sure.
You said 25% is coming out of project area 9?
No. So that's where it gets confusing. All of the trips are within Planning Area 7. They have all been assumed to be in Planning Area 7, and they're all covered under the anticipated growth there. So what was left over is the question. So what growth is left over after the project in Planning Area 7? What growth is left over in Planning Area 8? And what growth is left over in Planning Area 9? And it was determined through coordination with city staff that some of the growth assumed in 8 and 9 should be added to Planning Area 7 instead.
So these actually shifted potential trips into project area 7 and away from 8 and 9?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So that covers, for staff, the key questions and answers that we wanted to present to you this evening. So this is the list again of the actions that are before the commission. Should we get to the point that the commission is prepared to make motions this evening? Of course, we have those prepared for you as well. The applicant also this evening would like to give a presentation that's also linked to the questions and answers document. I know there may be other questions that have arisen since the last meeting, and so we'd also be happy to answer those a little bit later in the evening. So that concludes the staff presentation. I don't know if you'd like to ask any questions immediately or turn it over to the applicant.
Any questions for staff right now?
Not at this moment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant...I guess the applicant does want to speak.
Thank you for the invitation, or not. Thank you for having me tonight. Thank you to everyone for taking the time. So I'm going to provide a quick summary. I know you've heard from me for three hours, not too long ago, and so I'll try and be brief.
Before you get into that, I think we all need to declare ex parte communications that we've had with you. And I met with you last night and briefly today for a few minutes before I came in.
And I spoke on the phone with you, and I believe we met twice before.
I met with you recently on Monday, I think it was.
Since the last meeting, I met with you yesterday.
Since the last meeting, I spoke to you on the phone on Saturday at approximately 11:00 a.m. Can you be more specific, David?
And his wife wasn't happy.
The phone call was about 45 minutes long, and my wife was not very happy with it.
Thank you. To your wife and to you. Okay, I'll do a quick introduction. My name is Mike Field, as we've said. Wendy Hill Property Ventures, we're a local owner of commercial and apartments. We rehabilitate and build new. We acquired this property formerly known as Tankledge Square a couple years ago from Don Tankledge, the developer of the property. It was built in the '70s, the early '70s. We have all of our consultants here tonight. So Craig O'Mella, our architect, is here to answer questions of design and those sorts of things. We have our civil engineer, Mike O'Connell with BKF. We have our landscape architect, Carolyn, with the Gazardo Partnership, and we have our TDM consultant here as well from Nelson Nygaard Ria. So any questions on any of those topics, we'll be able to hopefully address those for you. So the project sits, as has been discussed, on eight acres on Industrial Road. Several people have managed to guess why we named it Meridian 25, but now it seems to be common knowledge that the project is 25 miles from San Jose and 25 miles from San Francisco. It's a tremendously unique location, given the current office demand in the general Bay area, to be able to draw from those two, from up and down the peninsula as well from the East Bay. You can see that the project is extremely transit-oriented. If you look at travel times to and from airports, trains, and to our major metropolitan cities, it's really within the tolerances that most people are willing to drive as opposed to what some people have started to experience with their office environments on the peninsula. The project benefits tremendously from the Branston cul-de-sac. We're going to talk more about that from circulation standpoint, but having a fully-lit intersection of Branston has turned out to be a tremendous benefit to the project. And we're also going to be able, because of that, to make some improvements to safety along Industrial Road, and we'll talk a little bit about that. As has been a discuss currently, the site has six industrial buildings on it. Those are leased to various tenants from fitness and yoga to hydroponics and tile stores. So hopefully, some of you have been to the site. Hopefully not for the hydroponic store, but they are one of our rent-paying tenants, and so I love them. There's approximately 535,000 square feet of proposed square footage, and of that, about and of the eight acres, about 3 and 1/2 will remain open space as part of the redevelopment of the property, which we're quite proud of. The project will be very sustainable. Not only will it meet Cal Green, but will exceed it in very significant ways, which we're going to talk more about based upon some of your questions from our last meeting. And we will be able to achieve a lead silver level as part of our redevelopment. We feel that the project is a great opportunity for several reasons. Not only to build an environmentally sustainable project within San Carlos, but also to allow tenants to grow and stay here. You know, a project like this will support high-wage industries and quality jobs for workers at all education levels. Will encourage new commercial development in this part of the community, which is really the strongest economic engine of San Carlos, and will obviously support pedestrian activity as well as other businesses along the east side corridor. As you can see, Redwood City has numerous office projects. San Carlos bears many of the impacts of those projects with none of the benefits. And so we're excited about this opportunity to bring some of those benefits to San Carlos. Okay, the next slide here, pardon me. So we've talked about this, but I'm going to delve in a little bit to some of the questions that you had at the study session. So the only item we've asked for that does not comply with the current zoning is the height. And so there's, and we've talked about that through better part of a dozen public events as well as countless one-on-one meetings, as well as through our correspondence with folks and stakeholders in the community. And so why we feel that this is something worth talking about is by allowing us to go to a higher building, we're able to do some pretty impressive things. Right now, Cal Green would, we are going to be able to produce 250% of the required open space on the project vis-à-vis what the city would require of us because of the height. In addition to that, we're able to provide setbacks that are 200 to 400% greater than what would typically be required of a project. And so by going to a taller height, the buildings are pulled off industrial, they're pulled off the pedestrian corridors to reduce their impact. In addition to that, you get what we call these pocket parks, this more park-like setting. The landscape here, we are planting 80% more trees than we're required to plant. And the trees along the front of the project, as well as the Branston side of the project, will be larger initial boxes. And why that's important... And why that's important is because the trees are already bigger the day we put them in. Some of you have driven by a project, and you go by, and they put a little toothpick out in front, and then years from now, it starts to grow. These trees, many of them will already be quite large. And so the immediate impact to this part of your community, which is predominantly industrial, predominantly old development, where these landscape areas weren't held in as high of a regard as they are today, is going to be really tremendous. So we're excited about that. You'll notice that the two corners, the bicycle ramps, as we call them, I call them bicycle runways, you'll notice that this map also shows a crosswalk on the right-hand side going to Commercial Street. I want to talk more about that. There's been lots of conversation, and I continue to grapple with this idea of where are people going to walk? And I've decided I can convince no one of anything. But what I will tell you is that crosswalk will be outfitted with rapid flashing LED indicators that will allow for immediate access across Industrial Road. Branson will continue to be a stoplight, and so folks will have to wait at that stoplight for it to turn in order to cross. And so these are some of the reasons why we do think, because of its location to the corner, because of the efficiency of getting across the major artery, which is the most... Which is what chokes pedestrian traffic off the most on this part of the community is industrial. That folks will choose to use what will be new, what will be fantastically built, and what will take them directly to where they want to go. But I won't convince everyone of that. Let's see, I think the garage is below grade. For the most part, we've talked about that. I'm not going to cover some of this. And I think I'm going to move on, because I know there's a lot of people here that probably don't want to hear me talk too long. There's been a question about employee headcount and TDM. We want to talk more about that. I think we kind of ran the gauntlet on this last time we met. The fact of the matter is, is that the TDM program limits total trips that the project can generate, period. And that's for the life of the project. Those numbers can't change. In addition, if we... If the city, in its annual review of our project, when there's a detailed explanation of what that review means in your answers to your questions, they can enforce additional measures to make us comply. So that's the purpose of the TDM program, is to truly provide the results that we're talking about. That's all I'm going to talk about on that one. So lead in water conservation. This has been another thing that's come up from several folks. So upon feedback from the planning commission in our study session, we have gone ahead and added, and the project will be conditioned, to plum the project for a recycled water system. The point of that, in my mind, is the more projects in the city that are directly plumbed for that, you can easily ascertain what the... How many gallons would be used? So if my project is using X gallons of water, and I'm plumbed for recycled water, the city now knows this is a project that would use X gallons of recycled water. And you get enough of those projects, and all of a sudden, it starts to be feasible to put that program in place. So the project will be conditioned to require that. The lead design requirements for the building will be state-of-the-art water conservation measures, which will be implemented in the building and the site landscape. Examples, the irrigation system will shut off when it rains. If there's high moisture content, it'll reduce the watering. All these sorts of things are there to reduce the water usage in the project. The project will surpass Cal Green, which, incidentally, is one of the strictest policies in the United States of America. The project will surpass it on the inside by 20%. And as part of our lead silver effort, the total project will result in a 40% overall reduction in water usage, resulting in the savings of 750,000 gallons of water per year. So we've gone 40% beyond Cal Green, which we're very proud of. Stormwater. This was another question that came up. The site is currently developed and is 95% impervious, which, as all of you know, means water can't go through the ground. The new site will improve this significantly, will be 75% impervious, or will be increasing the pervious material on the site by 20%, while obviously providing much additional square footage. So you can see what this height has done here. The post-development peak runoff rate will be less than or equal to the pre-development runoff rate. And the big thing here is a filtration system will be installed. So now, as part of a new development, the water coming off this site will be filtered before it enters the storm drains, whereas today, that's not the case. Let's see. The project will decrease the amount, talked about that. Oh, and the peak flow rate to the sewer system will be reduced by 13% compared to the existing condition. As it relates to adding... A question came up about adding some additional pervious surfaces. Because of the water table in this area, as well as the soil makeup, the project is almost entirely clay soil, which is by nature relatively impervious. And so we have to collect the water, and we have to take it to our bioretention areas. And so, for example, if we were to take a sidewalk in the center of the project and convert that to pervious surface, we would have to install a system beneath that in order to collect that water and take it to the bioretention areas, because it will not percolate into the ground with the clay soils. So the flip side of that is we leave it as impervious and collect it in the areas we've already established for that and take it to the bioswales while it'll be dealt with. So there is no additional benefit to creating more pervious surface on this site at this time. We've maximized that benefit, and obviously, the significant amount of open space is what has done that. And our civil engineers here, by the way, if you have more detailed questions on that, because that's all I know. That's all you'll get from me. So... Ooh. Is there... Okay. So this has been important, I'll touch on it again briefly. The current condition of the site, as you know, is environmentally impacted. That's the politically correct term. We have an agreement with the DTSC, which basically says, monitor it, don't dig any big holes, and tell us if anything changes. As part of the redevelopment, we have a fully executed agreement with the Environmental Protection Agency. We elected to go with that agency because the contaminants on-site are more within their purview, who will oversee the remediation of the project as part of the redevelopment. And the new structures will be protected. The occupants, the garage and the buildings, will be protected with vapor barrier systems due to upgrading contaminants on other sites. Feedback from planning commission also talked about solar. And so we... The project will be conditioned to install 10,000 square feet of solar panels on the project. That will either be on the garage or on the roof of the buildings. If it's on the roof of the buildings, they'll be laid flat below the parapet so that they would not be visible from the street. And if on the garage, they'll be installed in such a way not to impede the view of the clear-channel billboard. We're not sure where they're going to go yet, but they're going to go on the site, and that'll be a condition of our approval. Okay. This is it, guys. This is the last one. I added some words to this one. No trucks to use Holly Street or the Holly interchange. We wanted to make sure that's clear. Construction and haul routes has been a question, so the benefit of hauling dirt off a site is it means that some of the building's going to be underground. And so a significant portion of our parking will be underground, which means for the ... That word. You will not be able to see those parking stalls. That's the benefit. The trade-off is, there's going to be four months of trucks that are going to be hauling off-site. I need to put this in context. When those trucks start hauling, the existing uses will be gone. All the traffic, the 20,000-plus trips, or whatever it is that the existing project generates, will be gone. And you'll have nine trucks per hour for four months taking dirt off this site. So I want to put it in context. Yes, it's trucks, and yes, it's dirt, but it's not... It's nine trucks per hour. And so we do have some calculations for you, which were in the question and answer. If you wanted to review those, we can do that, question and answer, to talk more about hours, days, you know, and duration. But as you can see, the truck route will not come anywhere near Holly Street. Thank you so much. Thank you to city staff, especially in helping us in the preparations of this, and we look forward to any questions that you might have from me or from all the consultants here.
Any question for the applicant right now, or the...
I mean, I'm going to have questions, but I would like to give the public an opportunity to speak first.
I agree.
Okay. Anyone else? Great, I've got a lot of speaker cards, so we're going to limit to two minutes a person, and I'm going to try to get ahead of who's going to be speaking. So Alex Phillips would be the first person, Fred Cetero would be the second person, and Bob Paul will be the third person.
I'm Alex Phillips, 798 Walnut Street, San Carlos. I served on the planning commission for nine years, so I know exactly the amount of hard work and dedication and sacrifice that all of you have to go through, and I thank you for that, and I thank your families for putting up with that. During those nine years, I was chairman of the commission for four years, and for two years, I was appointed to a very special committee. It was a large committee, about 14 people, diverse people from all over the city, and it was called the East Side Specific Committee. We were... Our job was to rewrite the East Side Specific Plan. And after two years, we reached a definite consensus that we wanted to replace the one-story tilt-up buildings separated by parking lots with Class A buildings that went higher and freed up green space with trees and fountains and flowers and park benches where people could sit and meet. And that is exactly what this building is doing. It increases the quality of the architecture, it increases the open space, and it's adequately parked. And that was the main criteria we came up with. We wanted Class A buildings with more open space and parking underground or somehow secluded so it didn't take up the whole feeling of the area. I ask you also to think of the future, where technology is taking us. Within 10 to 20 years, people won't be taking their cars to work and parking them in a parking garage. They'll be riding to work in driverless automobiles that drop them off at work, and I think eventually this project will be drastically overparked. I thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, commission members, for allowing me to speak just for a moment. I've been living in San Carlos for 47 years. I have spoken in front of the councils and in front of different committees on different construction projects in the past. I have some other things for you to consider in favor of this. Number one, of course, we all know it's going to be a Class A building. They're not all Class A. This one will be. It's the most direct location, direct access to and from the freeway. There will be no need for cars to go through San Carlos and other places like that. For those cars coming from the freeway and people working in that building will not affect downtown or any of the residential areas, as far as I can see. Number two, the amount of glass that this structure is going to be built, that's going to show, will reflect the environment around it, the trees, the sky. You won't see just a big granite structure. So it won't look as awesome as some negative thoughts might incur. It isn't going to be, I don't think, that offensive. Number three, it's located... Think of this, the shadow that that thing will cast. I don't know if this was intentionally planned or not. If it was on El Camino, the shadow would be dark enough after about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, because the sun goes this way, and the building is that way. The shadow would fall on other buildings. I'll stop in one second. It will only go on the... Over the garage and the freeway most of the day, so it doesn't affect any of the residences or other businesses. Last, no matter what do you put up, what building you construct, there will always be cars, trucks, noise, inconvenience. So to panic over something like this, either it's going to be a lot of little interruptions or this major interruption, and once it's done, that particular thing is over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bob Paul, and I live at 21 Oak Creek Lane in San Carlos. Native San Franciscan, I've lived in San Carlos since 1974, and I just simply want to voice my support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers, Jocelyn, Peter, I think it's Cleveland or Cleverland, and Charles Getz. Jocelyn?
I'm sorry.
Hellstrup?
Yeah.
Okay.
Excuse me. Thank you. I'm just... Hello. Thank you, Your Honor, the mayor, and city council members. I consider it an honor and a privilege to be here to speak to the planning commission, and this is my first time. And my name, actually, it's Jocelyn Hunt Calavano Hellstrup. And the reason I say all the names is because those are the names whereby I've lived in San Carlos for 70 years. Oh, my gosh. And I take this opportunity as being a resident of San Carlos, as considering these matters seriously. And my grandmother, Rachel Solomon, started our heritage here, and she had lots of interest in San Carlos. She had lots of real estate. So I decided I would ask her. That was a little bit difficult, but I thought hard about what she might say. And I think she would probably say, look to the four corners. And she at one time owned and developed, among other properties in San Carlos, the Majestic Buildings, Ross Reese, Snyder's was there, then Dino's, and then I don't remember what the other corner was. At any rate, she was very, very interested in project development and expansion and growth. But I have to say, I said to her in this conversation that I had to her in asking her opinion, I said, yes, but what about the... And I have to say, this is my first thought. What about the more? More cars, more people, more bikes? But then I thought about and read about and listened about all the accommodations for these mores, and considering the careful, thought-out plan of this project, the more cars, more people, more bikes, more et ceteras, turn to more better, more better for San Carlos. And I liked that very much. There would be more money, more money to do the more better. And I have to say that I like the more money aspect, because I had been driving a car, and this giant dip in the roadway in San Carlos ended up with a compression back fracture, and was told, I'm doing much better, thank you. But I was told that that could not be fixed, because there was not money. There was not money to put this water transverse underground. And then my husband was injured, too, and we're walking along San Carlos on the sidewalk and all these dips and elevations in the sidewalk in San Carlos. So here we were, me with my brace and he with his walker. He'd fallen. And I'm thinking, let's make San Carlos safer. And there doesn't seem to be any money falling from the sky at this point for this to happen, so there would be that. That's one of the more benefits. I keep waiting for that buzzer.
I turned the buzzer off for you.
Oh, you did? Oh, I'm almost finished, thank you. And also, another more, more clean air, clean water, the reduction in pollution, more choices, more choices in restaurants, more opportunities for restaurants and businesses to stay there. For example... For example, a wonderful candy store on Laurel Street has gone, just one of the places that has gone, because they didn't have enough business to substantiate the rent. And I'm hoping that with the surge of people to fortify these restaurants and these candy stores and whatever else you have on Laurel, as well as the expansion of place for these restaurants, that would be a better more. And I'd like to conclude, more better, I'd like to conclude with elevating this whole conversation, this whole discussion, to a sandbox conversation. I'd like to come into your sandbox, but it'll be too crowded. Well, I'm coming in with crowd control, and I'll clean up the sand, and I'll fortify the structure that the sandbox is in. I'll make sure that you won't trip when you're going into the sandbox. Okay, and they live happily ever after.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Peter Cleveland, I live at 146 Palm Avenue. I've been a resident of San Carlos for forty-eight years, 1968. When my wife and I purchased our first home here, the east side of San Carlos was basically the economic engine which drove the city. We had Lenzkert Electric, we had Aitl McCullough, we had all manner of smokeless industry. The proposed development, the Meridian 25, that you have before you, is a 21st century economic engine. It offers real opportunities to increase our tax rolls, thus giving our children and our grandchildren a better opportunity to have the high-quality education that they deserve and that they must have in order to compete in a world that is moving much faster than it did when I was their age. I hope you will approve this project quickly and with a minimum of fuss. Thank you.
Thank you.
After Charles, it's David Krabi and Joy Sykes?
Good evening. My name's Charles Getz, 42 Madera here in San Carlos, been a resident of the city for twenty-eight years now. Like the first speaker, I served nine years on this commission, enjoyed every day of it, mostly. Also, prior to that, I served eight years in the South San Francisco Planning Commission, and I'm now retired, I'm a retired senior assistant attorney general, state of California. For thirty-eight years, I enforced SEQA among all the other environmental laws, the state of California. So I give that background, because I just wanted to say, the staff is still doing a great job, and I agree with the conclusions reached as to SEQA and the other applicable environmental laws and all the mitigations. But I really wanted to mention my prior experience in South San Francisco many, many decades ago, because nothing is ever new. This whole issue came up when I was a commissioner there. You might remember that hill. It says, "South San Francisco, the industrial city." Well, Genentech decided they wanted to put their world headquarters in our city when I lived there, and that was a big debate, because it would change the character of that area. We were the industrial city. But we went ahead with that, and it was a wise decision, as you can see now in that area, it's grown into an industrial area, I'm sorry, an innovative area up there. I would love to see that happen in San Carlos, especially in this corridor, because this is where it makes the most sense. So in terms of innovation, you have a choice, as we did many decades ago. You can leave it as it is, which is the past, or you can embrace the future and mitigate it so that it works for all of us, and that's what this developer has done. I strongly support the project, I think it's good for the city, I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
David.
Honorable Chair and members of the council, first, I want to apologize to the developer, because I was hoping to meet with you before this meeting, and it just didn't work out. But anyway, I wanted to talk to you about parking. I think this project is mightily overparked, and I would love to see it reduced. And I have, in my prior letter to you, I made a proposal of a trade-off to make that happen, so I'd like to reiterate that. And I was looking at, I was trying to find some numbers that told me how many cars are gonna be on the site, and the only thing I could find is under the TDM section on your attachment 11, page 14, about two-thirds of the way down, there's a paragraph that says, "The 2030 general plan EIR anticipates a trip reduction of 20% due to these future conditions, and estimate that would be 1,991 daily trips generated by office users in Planning Area 7 at buildout of the general plan. In accordance with this analysis, it is anticipated that the project trips will be within the estimated 1,991 trips projected." Okay, we've already been told that a trip is half of a parking space, basically. Anyone has to go to the site and back to it if they're gonna park there. So you take that 1,991, say 2,000, split it in half, that's 1,000 parking spaces. The code says 1,500. Why are we providing 500 additional parking spaces on this site for that reason? It makes no sense to me. It's costing the developer a great deal of money, and I had made a proposal to you, which was in this recent letter I sent you, that if the city could work with the developer and come up with a negotiated settlement, that the developer could promise to put some money toward a housing, affordable housing fund in exchange for reduced parking and potentially beneficial to him, so he'd come out a little bit ahead of it, so it'd be beneficial to him. That would be a way to go. So I'd like to reiterate that and hope that you would seriously consider it as it was outlined in my letter. And this is not to slow that project down, I think there's a way you can do it tonight to approve the project and still set the setting that the staff and the developer can get together and work this out before it goes to city council. I'm not trying to stop the project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, David. After Joy, it's Eric Westcott and Greg Galen.
Good evening. My name is Joy Sykes. I live at 793 Elm Street, apartment number 20. I've lived in San Carlos now for two years. My husband and I and two children moved here from Colorado, and I can say that I have not visited the hydroponic store on your site.
You just go home to Colorado, right?
That's right. I visit family. I have a short prepared statement I'd like to read this evening. As a parent in San Carlos, I am pleased that the developer is committed to our schools and our community. Beyond that, I feel strongly that this kind of beautiful, responsible, and forward-thinking building, this is the kind of beautiful, responsible, and forward-thinking building that belongs in our city. And it will be wonderful to have more of the folks from the building visiting our shops and our restaurants. I would much rather see this kind of development than any other in San Carlos on the east side. I hope you'll approve this project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Eric Westcott, I'm born and raised in Belmont, and I still have family that live in San Carlos. I also work for the San Jose Fire Department, I've been with them for nineteen years, so I'm here, I can't speak specifically for San Carlos Fire, but as kind of a subject matter expert in public safety and traffic concerns, I know there's been some concerns about possible public safety, just issues with getting through, like potentially new traffic. So the big concern in the fire department, at least with San Jose, is retail. So that's what really generates, if you put a Costco in, you have stacks of cars going out during holidays, it's crazy trying to get through that kind of traffic. A couple of office buildings generate no significant traffic in regards to public safety and getting through when you have public safety, when you have responses that you need to get through there. So I just wanted to kind of address that issue that I'd heard had been brought up.
Thank you. And after Greg, it's Kathy, I wanna say Palmer Lohan, and Don Eaton. Hi there.
Hi. Greg Galen, 395 Ashford Avenue, San Carlos. I've been a resident of San Carlos for about twenty years, involved in a lot of community events, mostly around athletics and schools. But I just also wanted to express my support for this. I think it's nice to have a Class A building in San Carlos. I think the location's appropriate for the traffic, the community benefits, not only for the improvements of the east side neighborhoods, but also the downtown, you know, being more people downtown during weekdays would be a big benefit as well. So along with everyone else, I just wanted to express my support for that.
Thank you very much.
Hello.
Hi there.
Hello again, I'm Kathy Palmer Lohan, I live at 1919 Howard in San Carlos. I have two kids, well, one just graduated from Central Middle School, and the other one's still at Central. I came tonight to lend my support to Windy Hill's development. I've been impressed with the developer's involvement in the community, as well as their willingness to support organizations such as the San Carlos Education Foundation and the San Carlos School District, long-term. I've seen the developer speak and know that he and his team have included the school community in the development proposal. This is not the case of every developer. Windy Hill doesn't have to give back to the community, but they've chosen to do so, long after the project is approved. I think we are fortunate to have this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Don Eaton, I'm a forty-year resident. As I mentioned last time, I've spent nine years on the Planning Commission, and I think most of you know, I also spent four terms on the city council, hopefully doing some good for this town, and we're seeing some of those results today. We're perfect, but we tried really hard. Last time I expressed, I used the word concern in the sense that I'm a concerned citizen. Mostly, with that sort of time and effort invested, I'm concerned that people don't screw up all the things that we tried to do that were good. And that's actually possible, I don't think you people are part of that process, but it is possible that that can happen. This project does not do that, in my estimation. This project fills a need for good-quality Class A space. It doesn't bother people. It's not in a residential area, it's not even anywhere near a residential area. Yeah, you can see it if you get up on a second story somewhere, but, I mean, that's an imperceptible impact, in my opinion. It's well thought out. It has access to downtown San Carlos, to Caltrain, where more and more people are gonna ride, especially after electrification. Its design is well thought out, it's set back from industrial road, it's attractive even on the freeway, or the parking garage, how many people can say that? It cleans up the environmental damage that prior users had on the land. It contributes a large amount of public money in terms of immediate public benefit money, as well as future sales tax and property tax revenues to the city, and cities can always use money. The Hyde exception, I believe, and I would second what Mr. Fields said, it's a trade-off. You can have a fairly ugly, boxy building, or you can have a much more attractive building that has open space, that's well-designed, and it's a complement to the city. One other quick thing, so basically, the Hyde exception is worth looking at. Some years ago, the city council spent a lot of time and effort and money to improve industrial road. Industrial road used to live up to that name. It doesn't anymore. There's attractive landscape medians, there's landscaping on there. This project is a, kind of the fruit of what that whole effort to beautify industrial road is really all about. To that end, I would recommend that you approve and recommend this for approval further yet to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Cloud, Bob Emmert, and Andy Klein.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Robert Cloyde. I've been a resident in San Carlos going on ten years. My son and I live on Elm Street between Arroyo and Britton. Overall, I think this is a no-brainer, and I strongly support it, and I recommend that you do as well. I attended one of Windy Hill Meridian 25 project events, and I was impressed. I asked questions, I don't make my recommendation lightly, so I went, I checked it out, and not only was I impressed with the design and the green building elements, I was also impressed with the quality tenants that this campus will attract. This is not a building which will house fly-by-night startups, this is a campus for more mature, stable companies still in a growth mode. The well-paid employees will die and shop, possibly even buy homes, in our city. I think this isn't an ideal development for us, I think it will have immediate impact, and I encourage you to approve it tonight without hesitation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
on this plan. Name is Bob Emmert. I live at 367 Fairfield. Bifocal don't work from that far away. My wife and I have lived in San Carlos since 1959, in what we used to call the Lorient neighborhood. We've seen many changes to the community, most of them pretty good, some of them pretty bad. We attended a public information meeting with Windy Hill, and we visited the proposed site for the development. It appears to me that the major concern is a concern for increased traffic. I've seen a lot of increased traffic in that community. Based on things I've seen and heard about this project, it's gonna be beneficial to the city of San Carlos. Certainly with regard to the tax revenue it will provide, the environmental cleanup that's sorely needed over there, and of course, those specific capital improvements they're talking about making, funding in relation to the development. No one wants to see increased traffic, but it appears that the design team has mitigated this traffic impact to the greatest degree possible. I agree that someday Holly Street might actually be passable during commute time, but not for some time. One of the big things that we got over there was the underpass. The second big thing that we got in that neighborhood was the hospital. There was lots of opposition to both projects. I therefore support staff resolution, a recommendation, and the proposed resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. After Andy, it's Gina Vandelos and Bonnie McClure.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. If you'll forgive me, I'm not used to be on this side of the timer, so I might go a little long.
Do I need to put a timer in or beeper for you?
Probably should. My name's Andy Klein, I serve on the San Carlos Chamber Board of Directors, and I'm here just to, I know you all received a letter, but we wanted to make sure you knew that we were overwhelmingly in favor of this development. We believe it will add to the business community here in San Carlos, it will add to our economic coffers, and it will also help us protect the character we have in this town. On a personal note, as Mayor Don Eaton said prior, those of us who have served up there before always get a little worried about who comes next and what's gonna get messed up. The years I spent on the city council was all about the budget. It took us two and a half years of digging and clawing and biting our way out to save this town from bankruptcy, and always terrifies us that that's gonna happen again. It's projects like Meridian 25 that will keep that from happening, and hopefully no city councils pass us will ever have to go through that again. My last personal note is, seeing a lot of developments go through this town, you see the good, the bad, the ugly, you rarely see the greats. The developers in this development have done a phenomenal job outreach into the community, they've done a phenomenal job working with the staff, working with the school district, they've gone above and beyond what most developers have ever done in this community. So I feel moving forward, we should use this as a benchmark. We should come to expect this from developers and not take anything less, and I think they have set the tone for future developments in this community, it's pretty great. Thank you.
Thank you. With time to spare, Andy, wow.
Hate to be a stick in the mud. My name is Gina Vandelos, and I'm on Montgomery Street, and I just have concerns about the project, as I live, I'm in the neighborhood that's really close to the project. I'm not saying in four against, I just wanna, you know, make sure that we understand that there's concerns that we have. know, make sure that we understand that there's concerns that we have. Myself and many of my neighbors have concerns about the massiveness of this project. It's very large, it's coming into near our houses. Very concerned about what's going to happen down the road as more and more of these big buildings come closer and closer to our neighborhood. So I'm very concerned about that. Concerned about traffic, right? We know that a lot of the traffic studies are talking about cars coming off 101, but we know that there's going to be many cars coming off 280. And so as cars come down from 280, they're going to be coming through our neighborhood. So I have concerns about these issues, and I just want to put it out there for the record.
Thank you. After Bonnie, Chris Wuthman and Dimitri Vandelos.
Good evening. I'm Bonnie McClure. I've lived here for fifty-eight years, but I'm representing the Sierra Club tonight. I really would like to thank the developers for providing so much open space. And I think the height allowance to facilitate this is great. So there are some improvements that we'd like to see made, and they were outlined in the letter presented by David Crabbe, architect. Sierra Club goes along with those recommendations.
Which letter, the June 14th letter or the May 31st letter?
The June 14th. Which was just admitted. I assume you have it in your package?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I won't go through everything. The design, one thing I don't think has been taken into consideration is, I hope that it's going to be bird-friendly, because that's a lot of glass up there. And so we don't want reflective glass or large areas of glass without some method to warn the glass, the birds that there's glass there. I know because I live in a house where when we first moved into it, we were picking up dead birds off our deck because there was glass on two sides. And they would hit, and then they'd land on the deck. So we put blinds in so that we could see out, but the birds knew that there was glass there. So please take that into consideration. And then the other thing that I'd like to say is that David covered the parking, but we would like to see your solar panels be more than what you're saying now. I think the thing is with the clean energy and the, in October, when we're going to be gathering together as communities to provide better electricity, solar panels, even if you came out with net zero on your job, maybe you could provide some electricity to the grid for the rest of us. That's all. Thank you.
Saved by the beep. Thank you, Bonnie.
I'll save you the trouble of trying to figure out my name again. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Chris Wuthman, and I live in 1943 St. Francis Way. My reaction to this project is very favorable. In addition to the outstanding planning and architecture and green features, I think it would be very difficult to find a better location for such a large project in San Carlos in terms of avoiding impacts on sensitive intersections in the Al Camino Corridor and at the difficult portions of Holly Street. I do not believe that folks coming to the project from the north using interior arteries rather than 101 will cut through the streets of the adjacent residential neighborhood, because my experience is of the morning traffic, that the flow on Holly from Old County to Industrial is actually easier than going through on a cut-through street. With respect to the afternoon peak hour, my experience is that the traffic leaving is much more distributed over time than in the morning. I say this because I am concerned for the nearby east side residents. But the project's ample parking has been noted tonight. Provision in combination with its robust TDM commitments should really make overflow parking into the residential neighborhood minimal, if not a non-issue. Now, some, I believe, in town, although they aren't really here tonight, may have concern whether this project will lead to gentrification of the commercial part of the east side. I think that the revitalization of Laurel Street, due in part to the increased mix of scale, density, and property uses of that district, proves that San Carlos thrives with less homogeneity and neighborhoods with eclectic complementary differences. So this is part of what actually makes growth smart. Finally, if the proponents can raise the money for this and fill the space, it will produce significant economic benefits and public improvements for San Carlos, as been noted. I don't know if this is a Planning Commission or City Council consideration or both, but I love it, last sentence, I love that this project does not involve San Carlos having to participate in the financial risk of this project with taxpayer money in order to get these kinds of benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. And after Dimitri, Patty Marsters.
Hi. It's wonderful to see a large number of people at a Planning Commission meeting. The concern I have is that there was no indication given to the neighborhood about this special Planning Commission, which is on a Wednesday. I didn't receive any email from anyone on city staff. My wife didn't. But there's an incredible number of people here. I'm wondering how that happened. The GESC, and we're neutral on the project. We're not like for or against necessarily. But what we're concerned about are the impacts to our residential community and the cumulative impacts of all of development that's going on. I think it's farcical to state that all of the traffic is going to be along 101. I work at a high-tech company. I cut through, up through the town. So, you know, what, the traffic study had nothing about impacts to our neighborhood, because it made some assumptions that were just flat incorrect. Their Amazon wants to put in a delivery service. We have multiple projects going on, and that's something that we have to consider. What I'm really, really concerned about, because we're, you know, neutral, is the fact that, and we've had numerous meetings with Michael Field, and I, you know, for the first time in my life, there's one thing I agree with Mr. Klein, is I do think that it's establishing a precedent for the type of developer that we want in the community. I think Michael has done a good job. But what I'm really concerned about is that he tried to get money placed for the neighborhood, guaranteed money. That was the thing that we asked. We wanted trees. We wanted traffic mitigations. We wanted things like that. And there is not one cent that's guaranteed for the residential community, not one cent. So that somehow, from our conversations with the developer through city staff, that got subverted. So, you know, height is, as I mentioned, height is an issue mainly from my perspective, from setting a precedent. So that is something I'd like to see you guys consider. But notice, there are three people from the residential community who are most impacted, who have shown up. We did not get a notice. I did not get an email. And I spoke to Paul Maginetti, who's the president of the GESC. He did not receive any notice either. So there was no easy way to let the community know. And that's something I'm very concerned about. You guys have seen me before, right, when I said, hey, if we had more dialogue about the projects and really would understand what the impacts are, and not just have a Pollyannaish view, right, to really weigh the pluses and minuses, because that's what we really need to do, right, then I'd be fine. But this is kind of stacked on the deck.
In all fairness, I think it was noticed the same way that every meeting we have has been noticed at our study session. We mentioned this meeting too, so.
Yeah, but it's on and off night. It's being fast-tracked.
A special study session.
It's a special session. It's on and off night, not on a regular Monday night. And this is being fast-tracked, because it's a big project, and we really ought to have more of a communication deliberation and consideration. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Hold on. Dimitri, you have a question. My understanding was that there was $750,000 as part of this.
Not guaranteed to residential.
Is your concern that it's not guaranteed to the east side? It's just a city's discretion? Is that your concern?
City's discretion, and from what I understood, it was for, you know, park funds that could go anywhere. Or, you know, I don't know the specifics. I would hope that you guys would know that. But there is not one guaranteed cent. What is being claimed is improvements for the east side are along Commercial Street, right? But what I'm talking about is, let's be honest. Let's actually talk about how to mitigate the impacts. There are going to be impacts. There's going to be traffic. There's going to be cumulative traffic. Everyone here should realize that with growth comes a cost, and with that cost, our folks who are living on the hill, we're going to need another freeway on and off ramp. That's going to be on Crestview. It's going to have to happen if we continue to grow. I'm not saying plus or minus. I'm, you know, I'm not for or against any of these things. I'm just saying, let's have honest discussions. Let's not stack the deck. And I would hope that you guys would consider some of these things, and particularly, because again, I'm not for or against, right? I would like to make sure that there are guaranteed funds to the residential neighborhood that reduce the impacts. And I would ask you to make that recommendation to, who's the next?
City Council.
City Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Patty, and then Tom Davids.
Hi. I came tonight. You all know that I put a lot of time into figuring out some real issues with the city's portrayal of the traffic. But I didn't realize, after reading the letters, I was kind of insulted. I didn't realize I could just say, hey, I don't like it, because it's not the prettiest building I've ever seen. It's, just because it stands out, doesn't mean it's outstanding. And some of those letters said the thing will not interrupt any views. One letter said it won't interrupt, it won't block any views that are worth seeing. And I just rode my bike right there, and you can see across the bay from Industrial. You can see through the view corridors, through the spaces in the buildings, between the buildings. And I have a feeling you're going to lose that. When you put the two buildings up, you're going to see their nice little area and a parking garage. You're not going to see the hills. And to me, that's valuable. We talked about it, about the transit building. Those view corridors were so important, and you're going to lose that. And so it kind of was insulting that, you know, that people seem to come out of the woodwork who are getting money for their favorite foundation, and they came out in support because it seems like a great building, and it looks nice. You know, I can't fault it. I'm not an architect. It's not my cup of tea. It's like two Samtrans buildings on top of each other. And I brought this up before. When the economy goes south, Samtrans is a public building. The Circle Star Building, it's almost turned into a jail. So God help us that the economy doesn't go south, and we don't have another jail. And I just wanted to say, you said he's in charge of the light, the traffic light? I would like the traffic light. I just would like to know how you're going to make sure that the traffic light at Commercial benefits the pedestrians when it doesn't benefit the pedestrians on Old County after the pedestrian enhancing improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here, and I'm on a registered support for the project. I personally would ask the question, and I haven't been here for the meeting. I just arrived, so I don't want to anticipate what's already been said. But my own personal opinion is, what if we don't do it? What if we just walk away? We don't reject, reject it for whatever reason, and nothing happens? So the soil doesn't get changed. It remains polluted. The buildings are older. They remain where they are. We don't get any impact fees with our material or the community development fees. But we all know, if that happens, it's only a matter of time before another project comes along. I don't think we can do better than this. I think we've, personally, I like the style. I think the setting is good. I think the location of garage is excellent. I think the idea of having some element of public space is perfect. To me, it answers all the questions that we've been looking at for many, many years as to what happens to our industrial area. And I think it's just the right thing at the right time, for the right purpose, for the right reasons. So I urge you to go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. So I don't have any more speaker cards. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on the matter? Is that, is this what, you wrote something here? Okay. Did you want to speak on the matter, or do you want me to? Yeah, absolutely.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me space. This is the second time, I guess, I've been here. I'm Michael Riggs. I'm a sixty-seven-year resident of San Carlos, on and off with, except for military, et cetera, et cetera. I can't help thinking that if you're going to have this building in here, is there going to be room allowed for residents to live? San Carlos has somewhat of a base of senior citizens, and I think they should have, as they get gradually displaced because of excess cost taxes, and some are working, they may have to have other places to live. Will there be housing available in this facility? As far as the hydroponics is concerned, our pioneer family, we used to grow vegetables, and I ate rabbits and chickens in the backyard, and little critters like that. Personally, where I'm living at now, I have to, my gardening is limited to a pet chia. And I think that if you're going to have the facility as big as it is, maybe in the top floor up there, you could, we could raise some tilapia fish. I mean, there's aquaculture is a nice thing. Shirley Temple Black advised me of that when I got out of the military. Too bad I didn't follow up on it. So I think, and then we also have the, City Council was talking about some year ago, about having a ramp, bicycle ramp over, you're going to spend around a million dollars or whatever on that ramp. Maybe this is a fine time to consider using that as a base. Maybe we could have a tram from up there where it used to be San Carlos High School coming down to the building, and you can drop down, let the passenger off, up, and come back up the hill like you do in Palm Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was the last speaker card. All right. So let's.
So can I ask questions of a non-applicant speaker if we close the public hearing? Can I? Okay. So then I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
David?
Well, I could start with the applicant, if that's all right. So the purportedly extra 500 parking spaces.
Yes.
So if the city were willing to allow you to reduce the number of parking spaces that you have, would you be at all interested in even discussing that?
So that question was asked after our last meeting, and I'll just read a few, or I'll read my response, and then I'll let our TDM consultant talk about this idea that they are quote-unquote excess. So it is under, so we, both my partners are on the Housing Industry Foundation Board. We, as developers, are part of the problem as it relates to affordable housing, and also, we try to be also part of the solution. So the real question you're asking me is, are you willing to participate in affordable housing in San Carlos? And the answer to that is, San Carlos is working on that, right? And I think that's what staff has said. From our perspective... From our perspective, we started this project about two years ago, and the negotiations with stakeholders in the community, with city staff and with others, have been ongoing, as you've heard tonight, we haven't checked all the boxes, but we're trying to, and so, those include $4 million of community benefit, $400,000 of fees, and then $4 million of property taxes are the direct economic benefits. We would not be interested in reopening the entire two years to look at, okay, what else? Right? What else? What more? I think that we've reached a point where we've tried to sit down with, I don't know how many people in San Carlos, and it's been a tremendously gratifying experience as a developer. This, the first time I received this suggestion was the day of your, our study session. And so, is this something that we could have talked about 18 months ago? Sure. But I know that the city's working on it now, I hope not to be a one-trick pony in your community, I hope to bring other projects forward, and certainly, affordable housing is something that every municipality in the Bay Area has to grapple with. So, we understand why it's coming up, but it's not appropriate for this project.
So, that would, that would be a no?
That would be no.
So, you do not want to reduce the amount of parking that you have?
All, so, the analysis by which is being presented is incorrect.
Okay.
We do not have that excess parking, but I'll let the TDM consultant talk about it.
Okay.
So, you'd be willing to talk about it from a TDM perspective, because it certainly, the math does seem that it is overparked to me, so please explain how I am wrong.
Okay, so I think that the parking ratio at the moment is set according to the city's own code, and it's at the minimum that is, you know, is allowed. The code is based on historic data on parking, and it's kind of enshrined in industry practice. There is new research that suggests that more parking produces more trips, and so, this is something that the city needs to think about, whether they want to reduce their minimums, but at this stage, the minimum is required of the developer, and they're providing what the minimum is. I wouldn't suggest going over the minimum. I think that the other thing to consider is the type of tenant. So generally, you'll have about three, three people per thousand square foot, so that would put it at, for this development, you would have about 1,590 occupants of this size of a development. In Silicon Valley, there is a shift to, you know, slightly higher rates, but I think with the TDM measures that you have, you have at about 80, you know, we're assuming a 20% reduction, so if we're assuming that 20% of them are coming by other means, we tend to think that there would be some parking spaces that are open, there would be no spillover into the neighborhood, and the developer could hopefully use those spaces for other purposes. And if there are higher, if there are higher numbers of, if they are sort of filling the buildings, you know, more fully, then you probably wouldn't need to use those purposes if they would be used for parking. So hopefully that answers the question.
Well, not really, I mean, look, so here's the thing, and this is where I come...
No more money.
Well, no, but here's, here's...
Let me just put it that way, so let me make it crystal clear, no more money. Okay? I'm not going to give any more money in community benefit in connection with this project. And so, I do not, I do not want to have a conversation of me taking dollars that should be sent or spent on infrastructure required by your code, and then cutting a, and then just cutting a check. I mean, it makes no sense to me.
But, Mr. Field, look, you know, I get it, but the way we were approaching this was, is it, so the code says you have to have the number of spaces you have. I don't believe that we can tell you to cut your parking. I don't believe we can, but if you want to do, I mean, that's basically where Mr. Krab is coming from. He's saying, if you believe that you are overparked, and if you wanted to reduce your spaces, and if the city wanted you to do that, and you saved money because of it, maybe there was a win-win-win situation. But if you want to come back and you want to say, I don't want to do that, then I'm going to accept that, but, you know, if you want to say, well, it's not overparked, well...
Here, so, then what's going to happen is, folks in the community are going to say, well, now we're, now we're on the razor's edge for parking, so am I going to get people on my neighborhood streets? Right? Who's going to enforce a permit program on the city's streets because now we're on the razor's edge? Right? So, my concern is that this came up, this is a very big-picture item of projects contributing towards affordable housing, and it's something that I care about. I don't think it's appropriate with this project at this stage. We are two years, we're at the end of a two-year process.
Sure. And just, and again, I mean, I'll, because I want to have the last word, I'm going to have the last word. You know, I think that what Mr. Krab was suggesting is that we approve your project today, but we basically approve it with the flexibility to allow you to talk to staff in the event that you want to, to talk about this issue over the next couple of months, not delaying your project, you know, not affecting anything, leaving you the flexibility to still say no, but giving you the flexibility to say yes, and to me, you know, I don't see the harm of that, but it's a waste of time if, at the end of the day, the answer's going to be no.
So, let me take a step back. If you frame it in that light...
Yeah.
Then yes, there could be certainly a conversation that says, just as he suggested, if, you know, we reduced it by one parking stall, and that savings was X dollars, and the city and the developer split that cost, or what have you, some, you know, some percentage, then I can see, then yes, it's a conversation we're willing to have, but there's, it's not just about that, there are these other issues to think about, is, we don't want to spill over into neighborhoods, we don't want to be an impact to the community where we shouldn't be, and so, that's why I'm very...
Sure, staff may say no.
Well, I just see it, I see the conversation, and so here we are, we're at the end of a two-year process, the community benefits are all out of defined, and now we're opening to this hypothetical issue that, to my knowledge, has never been done, ever.
Yeah, and I mean, the thing is, like, if we don't, I mean, if we don't provide the flexibility to at least let you have the conversation, then you can't have the conversation. But if we give you the flexibility, and you want to do it, and the city wants to do it, and there's a way for there to be a win-win...
I agree with you, yes.
And David?
You turn my no to a yes, thank you.
Okay, that was pretty good, David.
Yeah.
I wanted to say that my concern about being overparked that I did bring up at our last session has more to do with trip generation, not particularly about housing, though of course, that is not to say I don't care about that, I do very much, I just think of that in a...
Angela said she doesn't care about, about housing.
In a different perspective, not necessarily tied to your project.
I want the minutes to reflect that.
But the bigger concern for me, of course, is trip generation, the idea being if there is less parking spots, A, less cars would be driving on 101.
Sure.
And so, I would like the flexibility for that reason, for a TDM reason, because the number's simply 1,510 spaces, when we're only anticipating 1,600 people to work there, just with a 20% trip generation, just don't mathematically work for me.
It's a zone...
And your own TDM consultants says they wouldn't recommend that we have this number.
So, for example, let's say there's buses that come onto the project, right? And so, yes, through TDM, through, you know, so, we need to be able to perhaps, you know, one of the reasons that the garage is taller on the first floor is to provide for buses to park onsite. So, yes, there's extra parking, and yes, it's a significant cost, because keep in mind, if we were to remove parking, it would be the lowest level of the underground parking, the most expensive parking on the project. So, I'm reticent because we're, we are trying to build a project that will stand the test of time, and the city has already reduced, the city did a study, as part of the general plan update, I believe, and reduced their parking allotment, I think from 3.3 per thousand down to 2.9 per thousand, which is what we're complying with, which, if you look at historic through other municipalities, is one of the lowest. And so, this is a bigger issue, is what I'm trying to say, than just saying, hey, sure, great, let's split the money, you know, it's like you're, you go to lunch with a friend, and each of you throw your credit, you know, it's, I don't understand it.
Right, and I get that, and I certainly am no TDM expert either, and then I would ask Laura, I mean, is that a part of the city's, I guess, balance determining, of course, we do not want parking spillover in the East Side community, and we have to...
That, I know, I've learned that lesson.
And we have to balance that, though, with the extra cars on the freeway and street, and is that something that you consider, and is that how this number was reached?
That's exactly right. We consider when we're looking at the parking requirements, as you know, the code does allow certain types of reductions in certain situations, there's different application process, there's different aspects of the code that can be applied. In this particular context, from the beginning, staff encouraged the applicant to park the project according to the code. The code really was considered at the time of the zoning code adoption, and we do believe that the standard is an appropriate one for this type of project in this type of context. That context being really important in that there's not a good place to spillover, it's not a downtown environment, like our, you know, downtown where we have a public parking lots where people can intermix, that area is still developing, there may be places in the future to overflow, there's not really immediately, and we really have great concern about that going over and affecting small businesses that are already existing in the community, and reaching out in the direction of the residential neighborhood. And so, when we look at these and we make recommendations to you, it really is context and project-specific.
Yeah, well, now I'm going to torture you a little bit, because, I mean, ultimately, you weren't, what if you had, because we're looking at these numbers, and they say, it looks like there's going to be 1,000 cars coming every day, and there's 1,500 parking spaces. Say you came to that same conclusion, you didn't have the discretion unless we gave it to you to reduce the parking spaces to 1,000 spaces, right?
The code has some authority, but we would be bringing that to you.
You would be bringing that to us.
We would be describing it to you with the rationale for doing so. So, in this case, I think staff recognizes that there's a possibility it's going to be overparked by a little bit. I think that that's possible, we're trying to consider the nature of the types of tenants that are going to be located here, and that we know that tech companies have variable schedules, so at times, there's going to be some empty spaces. We also know that tech companies have big all-company meetings, there's days when everybody comes, we need to make sure people are accommodated on those days, and we need to protect the community and the residential neighborhood. And so, this is a case where we felt like the standard is appropriate, and that's not the case in every, in every, in every project.
And not only, not only the residential neighborhood, but all the surrounding commercial buildings that are there, okay? So, it would be a ripple effect, so the first thing that would happen is people would park in the other commercial areas nearby, and then that would force people to park further and what, further and away, further away from them.
So, this leads me to my second question about math. 1,600, 1,510, 20%, I competed, I was a mathlete. So, and that is not, that is not correct.
That also needs to go down in the record.
So, my point being, then I guess my next question would be, then what is the realistic upper-level capacity? I did see the answer in our report.
Capacity of what?
And it talked a lot about TDM as a way to control, as a way to control the trip generation, and I absolutely agree that that seems to make sense, but it still didn't answer my question from the last meeting, which is, what is the realistic upper-level capacity that the HVAC system could accommodate? What is the realistic upper-level capacity? The report alludes to that there are building codes and fire codes, but goodness gracious, we do not want to go by fire codes, that's what, one person per 20 square feet? So what, what is the realistic upper-level capacity of these buildings?
That's a great question.
Thank you.
I wish she would have made me sit down before. Okay, so, this is a question that has come up several times, not just in the study session, but elsewhere. And so, one of the things that Commissioner Marsters talked about when I answered this question last time was, well, what if air conditioning gets more efficient? What if people's computers use less power? Because the idea is, is that the, that the design of the building is limited to a certain capacity. And so, that's why we continue to focus back to the maximum trip generation, because, you know, we, all of us could come up with a scenario where, in a given day, you know, 40 years, I don't know when, but where air conditioning systems are so efficient, and computers, you know, run off of your, you know, the heat off your body, I have no clue, where you could have well in excess of what the current design anticipates. So, the only way I can answer your question is say, the maximum trip generation, the TDM plan, is some 3,700 trips. If we ever exceed that, the city can implement additional measures to force us to get back down to that trip generation level. The city has an annual ability to review that, to count cars, to strip over our entries and exits, to confirm what our trip generation is, and if we exceed it in any way, then the city has the authority to come in and implement additional measures to force us to comply.
Well, let me simplify then, the current HVAC system that's proposed, not future tech, how, how many is the upper, upper-level realistic capacity for the current HVAC system proposed?
That system's designed for 1,600 occupants.
At a maximum.
That's the design threshold for the system. Could you fit more people in? Yes, but you're going to have toilet issues, right? Because our toilets are designed for 1,600 people, so now, you know, the restrooms aren't going to be quite as pleasant, you know, you're going to have a difficult time controlling the cooling in the building, certain, you know, so, you'll start, it's just like, you know, anything, as you start to push it through to its limits, can the design continue to work? Yes, but it's going to start, you're going to have compromises.
So, you would say the 1,600 number is an upper-level realistic capacity?
That's what it's designed for.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, how are you going to save the birds?
You know what, stop copying off my papers, David, that was next.
Our architect, Craig Almela, is going to talk about the birds.
Craig, talk about the birds, please.
Craig, can you also talk about...
Wait, wait, no, I'm going to say it first, I don't know what it is, but...
Stop, stop, stop cheating. I understand that the bird issue also coalesces with the glare pollution and airport land use issue, so if you could talk about all of that, that would be wonderful. Let's start with the birds.
Yeah, I'll let Mike talk about the airport issues, because I really can't speak to that. My name's Craig Almela, I'm with ArchTech, I'm the president of the architectural firm that's been involved in the design component of the project. The bird-friendly issue is an issue that is countywide, we deal with it in all of our jurisdictions throughout the city, and it is our intent to follow the San Francisco guidelines for bird-safe building design, which we have determined is the most restrictive in the county, from this standpoint. We just finished a building over in Menlo Park, right there on the corner of Marsh and 101, you can kind of see them, and the city of Menlo Park utilizes their standards for their design criteria. The bird-safe design guidelines are approximately 150 pages of very specific design guidelines, and it breaks it into really two components. The first part is general building, common sense, bird-safe guidelines, and then the other component is, it breaks every site into three jurisdictions that are associated with proximity to bird refuge bays, you know, and other areas, so it basically rates the sites based on risk, bird risk, okay? So, it's our intent to follow through with those guidelines designed accordingly to those, which has a series of criteria. It goes from, from a simplistic standpoint to saying, okay, if you have clear glass on a building, you must frit it, and if you don't have clear glass on a specific building, if you use different types of glare, reflective types of glazing, the more anti-glare, the more anti, it's got very specific guideline criteria, you can get to the point where, depending on how expensive the glass you put in, you don't do any kind of fritting, it depends on the type of glass.
Sorry, can you explain fritting?
Well, when you have clear glass, which is like, for example, in this particular building, we have guardrails up at the top, those are crystal-clear glass, clear glass, it's, you've probably all seen them in buildings, it looks kind of cool, it's very slick and clean. Fritting is a, there's many ways to do it, but the most common way to do it is to put a series of white components on the glass that not only eliminate reflection, but provide bird warning systems to the birds, their own, the way they look at their radar systems, okay? Now, we have three different types of glass on this building, and the specific glass types are right now defined by the colors of the glass, right? But depending on the types of reflectivity on the glass, and the types of clarity of the glass, we can, depending on the glasses that we specify, either frit them all the way down to not fritting them. So, the San Francisco guidelines, which... fritting them. So the San Francisco Guidelines, which, like I said, Menlo Park utilizes, and if you go down to, as far down to Sunnyvale, they have like six criteria. I mean, most cities are still developing them, and they prefer us to use the San Francisco Guidelines. They're very well thought through. They're very restrictive.
Mr. Fields? Would you be open to a condition that the building comply with the San Francisco Bird Safe Design Guidelines or with modifications as approved by staff designed to achieve similar results?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you speak also, this same technology would address glare pollution as well?
Well, mostly what you're referring to, glare pollution, is the type of reflectivity of the glass. And as an architectural firm, we hate Las Vegas-style glass that's reflective. It is our intent to have tinted glass, not reflective glass. So realistically, I don't think that's a problem. I mean, there isn't any glass that doesn't have some amount of reflectivity, but our intent is low tint and minimal glazing that has reflectivity. There's not a whole lot of benefit to that. You get what you call the Funny House look when you get, it's not a good thing. So that's not our intent.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that good?
And then my final question will be for Mr. Fields.
Mr. Field?
Oh, yes. And then I'll, then I'll stop talking for a while. I'm sorry. Switch it up for somebody else.
You mentioned airport, so, yeah, so we, absolutely. So we submitted the design to the FAA as well as the Airport Land Use Commission, and so they vetted this, the design, and it was also approved by CCAG, right? Is that, and who, so it's been reviewed and approved by all those, all those agencies.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Field? I was just trying to save you from sitting down and having to get up again.
I'm scared of you.
Don't be scared. I'm just asking questions.
The guy with the bow tie, that's the one you always gotta be scared of.
It's his intimidating bow tie, too.
So it's, it's colorful.
It looks great.
The power of a bow tie, come on.
Electricity generation. So how much, how much electricity are you gonna generate?
So I emailed my friend who's an executive at SolarCity to try and figure that out. So here's the answer to that question, which is basically, there's a wide range of panel productivity, I guess I would say. And so he, he was estimating that a 10,000-square-foot system in the city, you know, because it's by city and the weather patterns, all this other stuff, that we would generate, I better get these numbers right, and if I don't, you can't hold me to them anyway.
I could, actually. I could figure out a way.
Yeah, I believe it was three, three million, it was like 30 megawatt-hours a year.
Okay.
So that's 3 million kilowatt-hours, right? Or something like that.
I can't multiply by a thousand. Can you multiply by a thousand?
But just to be clear, 100% net zero was talked about. We would have to put five layers of panels across the entire acreage to achieve net zero with the current technology. So everyone's hope, of course, is that panels become more and more efficient, and that's our goal. But from an environmental standpoint, you know, the project's all LED, it meets CalGreen, and of course, with Lead Silver exceeds it as far as power consumption.
Are you actually, I believe at one point, unless I misunderstood you, are you, I know that you're building in order to support solar panels, but are you going to actually install some solar panels?
That's right. So we, we previously committed to install the infrastructure in the garage. We will still do that. In addition to that commitment, based upon our, our study session, we have committed to actually install 10,000 square feet of solar panels, and the project will be conditioned for that.
And how did you come up with 10,000 square feet?
We figured that it would fit on the roof of the building, because we don't think we can do that much. So we think we can do the southern part of the garage, but we can't get close to the billboard. And so it'll fit on the roof of one of the buildings, and that's why we selected that square.
I mean, could you, this is not a trick, can you put more on the roof than you're proposing?
More?
Could you? This is just a question. The answer could be yes or no.
So what we're trying to do is preserve some capacity for the tenants to be able to figure out what they want to do. Because, you know, certain tenants have their own bailiwick of what they would like. So we're trying to preserve some capacity for that. But we are gonna commit to 10,000 square feet of solar.
Can you give me a sense, as a proportion of the available space on the roof that you're using?
I'd have to look at the submitted plans. Our floor plates are roughly, well, there's a deck on the 6th floor. What's our floor plates on the 6th, on the 6th floor? One second.
Hmm.
Seventy percent is what we'll be using.
That's pretty good.
Not bad.
Yeah, it's not bad.
Oh, no.
What's that? Oh. How many, how many charging stations are you providing for vehicles, approximately?
Who remembers that answer?
This is a two-year project. You should know these answers right off the top of your head.
Five percent of the parking stalls will have charging stations. So what is that? 1,500? So how many is that?
That would be 750.
No, no, 5% of the 1,510 parking stalls.
Seventy-five. I told you, I can't multiply.
Angela's an mathematician.
Thank you.
Freshman year high school math.
I was gonna say, wait a minute. And are you, and I'm not, I'm not asking for this, this is, I'm just asking, are you wire, are you wiring to allow installation of more than 75?
No. Seventy-five is an enormous amount of power, because these are all, think about your home, these are all 220 plugs, right? And so we want people to move around and use them, not park their car there and leave it all day. So, you know, those will be spaces where people have to move after a certain amount of time.
I have some...
And that accounts for part of the 20%. If you have to move 75, 75 cars around, then you need to have 75 extra spaces in order to move those vehicles to when you're powering different vehicles.
So those are the only questions I have for the applicant. I wanted to have a conversation with Mr. Crabbe at some point, but it can be later.
I have some questions for staff, but I can wait, because I spoke a lot.
I'm just gonna point out that this commission's, this is the first time ever that we've talked about overparking. I mean, I don't know how many years it's been, but that's never come out of any of our mouths on any project, so that's surprising.
Well, since I have my staff question ready, I can go ahead.
Go for it.
Mr. Fields, would you mind getting your slide? You had a, you had a really nice slide that had an overview of where Meridian 25 would be in comparison to the huge amount of industrial, or the huge amount of office space in Redwood Shores, and I'm hoping you can pull that up for me.
The clicker's turned off, but it's gonna turn on here. Right where you're talking. There it is.
That's it. Thank you. Now, now, let me get that on. Perfect. So my question's actually for staff. Mr. Fields and I actually tried to come up with an answer yesterday and couldn't, couldn't quite hit it, so I wanted to make sure I asked to you guys. The $1,674,000 of the traffic impact fee, from what I understand from Lisa, goes to traffic priorities within the city's purview. And so I guess my question is, what money goes to improvements to 101 or any traffic improvement outside of the city's purview? Not, not just our, our on-ramps, but, I don't know, repainting lanes, widening of lanes, upgrading of the freeway of any sort. And the reason I ask is that when we did a sort of a quick cursory search, Caltrans, their funding site mentions reference to developer fees and gas taxes and all sorts of other funding mechanisms. But I have no idea to which, which fees, the developer fees are, are being funded into. And I guess, I feel some sort of obligation as a regional commuter that gets frustrated driving by many, many, many other office projects that congest traffic on 101 and 280. And I'm just wondering, do developments contribute to 101 and 280 upgrades outside of the city's purview, and how did they do that?
Through the chair, typically, local transportation impact fees don't benefit outside the communities where they're from. So for instance, for our traffic impact fee, it only benefits projects in the city of San Carlos. However, gas taxes that we all pay goes to the state, and then the state redistributes that, and that pays for Caltrans work in their highway systems and things like that. However, one example where it's sort of, there's a hybrid, for instance, is the interchange project. So the Holly 101 interchange project is a project where our, some of those transportation impact fees from the developer will go toward that project, like PAF did too, and some of the other projects will be paying a small portion of that project, and the rest of those fees will come most likely from grant funding. So I hope that answers your question.
I, I mean, it does explain the mechanism, and I'm certainly not, it just seems odd that, I'm sure I'm not the only one that drives north on 101 and gets stopped almost immediately when we come to San Carlos or go any further north. It seems odd to me that Oracle Host Analytics, Perfect World, Quality and Perva Rim, you get the idea, haven't given any additional funding beyond the gas tax that residents pay to improve the freeway flow of traffic. So, good to know. Thank you. Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. I have a second question, also concerning, I guess, traffic flow in a sense, but it's pedestrian and bike flow through the East Side neighborhood. And I think, I think the developer and city staff has made a convincing argument for why commercial was chosen for those improvements. But I guess my question is, are there other things we can condition with this project to prevent or discourage pedestrians from wandering through the East Side neighborhoods, to get to the trains specifically, not to downtown? For example, one of the suggestions that was made by the public at our last study session was to study cul-de-sacs. And I'm wondering, can we condition that we study cul-de-sacs, not put them in, because I actually don't think the residents will like the answer to that study. But if they want it, I feel like they deserve the answers, and I'm wondering how much such a study would cost.
Well, you couldn't condition this project to have any impact on whether or not the city would study or improve the roads around the neighborhood with cul-de-sacs. So there's no nexus here, even though I think there's a, perhaps a perceived nexus. You could make that suggestion as a planning commission separately to the city council, that you think, from what you've heard, for instance, from in your review of development projects, that, that it's a potential issue, and it's something that should be studied. I can tell you that the Greater East San Carlos neighborhood did, maybe a year or so ago, did come to the city council with a list of things that they found important to their neighborhood and presented that information to the city council, and staff had some, and the council and the neighborhood had some discussion of these issues. So I think the council's somewhat aware of, of some of the ongoing issues there. But again, if you wanted to reiterate that that's important, you could do that as a commission.
And now, now I'm gonna give you the nexus. If you look in the general plan, under Policy Land Use 9.3, assure that redevelopment, public or private, mitigates any negative traffic and parking impacts on or adjacent to residential neighborhoods. It's obvious from what the developer mentioned, he believes, as well as I believe, that there will be impacts to the residential neighborhood. And the second piece of that is Policy LU 9.4, mitigation measures shall be utilized to the greatest extent feasible for neighborhoods surrounding new proposed developments. So those give you the nexus to allow some of the development fees to actually go towards studying this and mitigating the impact of these, you call them perceived impacts. The neighborhood would pretty much look at them and say, they're guaranteed impacts, okay? Anybody leaving there is going to find it much easier to go up Industrial Road and make a left onto one of the residential streets in order to get to Caltrain. Rather than making a U-turn, go back to Commercial Street, go up Commercial Street, and then head north again in order to get to the Caltrain station. So I don't look at it as a perceived impact. It's a definite impact. And so I think somewhere along the way, we need to find a way to mitigate that, or at least put money into the system to study it, and I wouldn't limit it to just cul-de-sacs. It could be no left-hand turns off of Industrial Road into the residential neighborhood. It could be a double yellow line out on Industrial Road, not allowing people to go left or right, which, if there's a lot more traffic on Industrial Road, you don't really want people stopping in the middle of that traffic and crossing the, the two lanes of the road. But there's multiple alternatives that could be looked at and studied. The problem I see is that there's no money in this project that's guaranteed for that, okay? There's a piece of the development agreement that partially, that, that could potentially be used for that, but it also says that all that money could go to Parkland, okay? And I think that that needs to be changed. How much we want to put in there, I, I don't know. But I think that that's something that we as a commission need to have that discussion. The other alternative to me is to use some of the traffic mitigate, the traffic impact fees, because this is an impact of the traffic. And, and I don't know if staff has a preference to sort of have us designate money from the traffic impact fees or from the development agreement towards dealing with this situation. So that's a question.
To answer that question, the development agreement is not within the purview of the planning commission. That is in the purview of the city council. You can always make suggestions. So I would encourage you, if you want to have that discussion and make suggestions to the council about how the money in the development agreement is used, that's, that's up to you. And I think on the first point, there needs to be some empirical evidence to make an nexus between this project and cul-de-sacs and things like that. And I don't see that in the traffic data. Again, that's another thing that, that you could have that discussion and make suggestions, but you can't condition the project to put cul-de-sacs in for the neighborhood.
My question is, at any point, has a study of traffic been done that looks at the neighborhood? Not Industrial Road, not Holly Street, but the residential area itself?
You know, I don't know. There could have been, I think that traffic counts have been done in the area, and we, I'm sure we could provide that to you, but I don't know if a study has been done per se. But I know that we have done some traffic counts most, most recently in the area. But again, a traffic study of the, of the residential neighborhood is really a different thing. And I, I realize that, that there's concerns about this project creating impacts there, but that isn't, there, there is no connection with this project. So, but I get it, and you can ask for those things.
You and I are gonna agree to disagree on that.
You can say there's no nexus with this project. It seems like a pretty straight line to me. I, and whether we can condition or recommend, I think we definitely want to do one or both, because I see that there would be an impact into the residential areas. Maybe we didn't study it, but I see that, and I think that's something that we want to look at. There's what, there's the whole, my question was about the $750,000 and how that's gonna be spent, whether that's, you know, who governs that, and, you know, what kind of conditions are already, I mean, I believe that the developer decided to make it as, as open as possible so we can use that money the way we, you know, the best, sort of best serves the public. And, and so if we're talking about, I mean, maybe that's the recommendation that we make, is that, you know, we take some of that money, didn't ask for that study.
Yeah. And let me read that, what this says. It says, "The city will use the above funds to A..."
It says, "The city will use the above funds to A, improve developer park and recreational facilities, and/or B, for maintenance of public infrastructure, sidewalks, new bulb bouts, speed bumps, cul-de-sacs, et cetera, within the portion of the city running north to south between Holly Street and Britton Avenue, running east to west between Old County Road and Industrial Road." The issue I have with this is the and/or in-between essentially allows the city to not use any of this money to deal with this, okay? If we removed the and/or, okay, or somehow changed this so that the money, you know...
You know, Scott, they already told you that we have no purview over the development agreement.
So, we can't change anything.
We can make a recommendation.
We can make a recommendation.
So, let's just focus on the recommendations then, because we obviously know we, we have no...
We have no purview.
We have no purview.
I understand we, we don't, but in order to make a recommendation, we need to understand what we'd make a recommendation about. And so, reading that is simply giving us the basic understanding of how we go about making a recommendation about the, the money. That's all I was, that's all I was doing. I wasn't trying to do anything beyond that and rewrite it.
Well, should we talk about recommendations? Because I think, I feel strongly that we should make a recommendation regarding the, the residential areas and having a study done.
Well, let's, let's, any, any other questions for the applicant directly or any of the experts?
I have one that I think might help address one of the other concerns that a member of the public has mentioned. My question is, is, there's been some concern particularly in the greater east side about the height of the building. And, and my question is, I understand the difference that in order to get the terrific amount of green space that you have in the project, that you need to go up a floor. So, I guess my question is, why? We are hitting a magic number and I think the public would benefit from knowing why that's important.
Okay. And so, we've talked about this a little bit at, at many of the public events. So, from a leaseability standpoint, what we're trying to do is build a successful project. And in fact, Patty Marster's talked a little bit about failed projects. Circle Star's been vacant for over 10 years.
Right.
There's reason that projects fail and it's typically in the Bay Area, not because they're in the Bay Area, because the Bay Area typically has very high absorption rates for commercial office space. They fail because they don't have the things that tenants want. And so, as it relates to this location, it's what we call an infill location, which means it is a very unique product for, for the location. We're surrounded by industrial. So, if a tenant were to move here and didn't have built-in expansion at the project proper, they would have nowhere else to go. And so, that severely limits a tenant being willing to go to a place like this, because they say, okay, well, we're going to move here, we're going to uproot our company, we're going to uproot our employees' traffic patterns, you know, we're going to lose employees, because some of them are going to say, hey, I, I live in San Jose, I'm not making the extra X number minute drive to San Carlos. So, we're going to go through all this disruption, all this cost, and then in three years, we're going to outgrow it. So, that's, that's, that doesn't work. And so, that's one of the reasons Circle Star has really failed, is because it's a tweener. It, it doesn't provide expansion for mature companies. The magic number is really half a million feet. And so, once you get to half a million feet, these tenants start to really take notice and feel that it's an acceptable theirs there for them to grow into. And I want to emphasize this point using money, because I've already said that word too many times. The top floor is the most expensive part of the building. The top floor requires the bottom floor of parking, which is a magnitude two to three times more expensive than the above-grade structure. So, the first four columns, the second four columns, the third four columns, all have to be thicker and the, oh, thank you, for her, or him, whoever it was, I can't see. All the cost to build that top floor is very expensive. It's likely that if you could have a project that didn't have that top floor be successful, you would do better as a developer. But you have, in an infill location, in a pioneering location like this, you have to have enough capacity for these companies to grow.
That answers my question, I think helps educate a few more people.
I'm going to tag, I'm going to tag on to that, just, just a little bit here.
On me here?
You can be there if you want. So, and I told Michael I was going to bring this up. So, when you look at the allowed height and the approved height or the parapet height for products, projects, over the past 20 years, okay? And you look at 1,001 Laurel Street was 6% over. PAF was 10% over. Wheeler Plaza is 20% over. Circle Star, which was built two decades ago, is 40% over. 959 Skyway is 10% over and I'm assuming this is Pacific Hacienda, is 4% over. The current proposal is 100% over, okay? And this is a good time to, to talk about that, because we were talking about height.
So, Scott, I mean, I don't, you know, it seems like this is more your, sort of your argument for a reduction of the height, which maybe we can take after we make the motion? I mean, I mean, is this going to include some questions?
I'm, I'm not suggesting a reduction in height, okay? What I'm, I'm looking at that, and I had this discussion with, with Michael about the benefits that we gain by having a taller building, okay? But one of those benefits that was talked about within the community, and especially the east side community, was the idea of benefits directly in the community that was going to be impacted most heavily by the height, okay? And so, that was my understanding, part of the development agreement that the, the, the money was going to go for sidewalk improvements, new bulb bouts, speed bumps, and those types of things. So, my issue is, if there isn't a, somehow nexus to the traffic, solving the traffic, then to me, there isn't a, a justification for the increased height.
Yeah, but I guess at this point, it's like, so, we can, we can approve the project, we can deny the project, or we can approve a project with, you know, some changes. So, I'm just, what are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting the, the last one.
But what are you suggesting specifically? What, what specific changes to the project are you suggesting?
What I'm suggesting is recommendations to the city council to change, change the development agreement.
So, what, what do you want to recommend to the city council?
So, I would like to see one of two things happen. I would like to see...
I mean, just start with one.
And I think this is a discussion, because it's an either/or, it's not a one or the other.
Is there one that you prefer?
Probably the one that I would prefer is a change in the development agreement that guarantees that those funds are going to be used for addressing traffic impacts in the residential neighborhood.
Okay.
If, if I may, since I'm pretty familiar with the development agreement, you may not be as familiar.
Probably.
I actually could recite most of it. What, what, what you're referring to is meetings we had with the GESE board as it relates to parenthetical B of that section. And parenthetical B of that section talks about the cul-de-sacs, bulb bouts, et cetera, et cetera. Parenthetical A talks about parks, right?
Yes.
And so, if I understand you correctly, what you are asking for is that parenthetical A be removed from the development agreement.
Absolutely.
I think we have $600,000 already sitting in parks over the next two years from the transit village and there has been no outreach to the community about how that $600,000 is going to be used. So, what Mike's going to say now is that part of the community wanted the park money, part of the community wanted the traffic money. So, I got it, Mike, you don't have to defend your development agreement. We'll, we'll decide whether we want to make that recommendation.
One thing I will mention in addition to that is of the 4.4 million dollars, excuse me, the 4 million dollars, the 4.4 is the fee side, of the, the community benefit in the development agreement, other than the category of 750,000 being discussed now, the remainder of those dollars gets spent in the east side of the city. So, I think that's important to understand, that it may not be spent in the neighborhood, but it's being spent on the east side.
Thank you. Okay. And I will clarify that the remainder of that is, is spent in the commercial portion of the east side.
Okay.
Okay?
I think that was pretty clear. We've talked about that, so, okay. Any other recommendations?
So, I still have a few more questions.
Okay.
And I'd just like to go down through these. So, and, and most of these are, are for Michael. Where will the signage go on the building? Do you have any idea? I, I know it's not in the plan, but...
It's not, so...
I want to make sure this doesn't turn into a big giant...
In and out?
Yeah.
Need we say more? Okay. So, no, it won't. So, we will have a master signage program and that'll have to be approved by...
The planning commission.
Planning commission. So, we'll be back before you, Scott won't be here at that time, but...
I won't be here, so I'm kind of asking that question in anticipation of, do you have any idea where you think the signage might go? Is it going to be on the side of the building? Is it going to be on the front of the building?
Signage will be focused, so, so the more visible signage, the, the signage you're worried about, I'll say, will be on the freeway side where it'll get the most identity. That's my guess. You'll get a submittal and you'll be able to review it and comment on it. And then, most likely, we'll have surface level signage for, you know, pedestrians and vehicles, but there would be very little, I think, incentive for a company to spend the cost of a sign to put it facing, you know, downtown. I think that where, where the identity is, is along the freeway.
Okay.
And you, you may even actually see the signs on the garage and not on the building, because it would be more prominent along the freeway. But we'll get something to you when we build the project.
And then, don't sit down yet. Landscaping.
Okay.
So, we talked about trees and I mentioned to you just before we came in, my concern that the trees along Industrial Road were actually going to be much taller than the trees that were actually along the, the side of the building, closest to the residential neighborhood, as a way of hiding the building a little bit.
So, I just want to make a mention, just to reiterate, the, the site has 80% more trees than is required. I'm just making that mention.
And I appreciate that.
Yes. The trees along the front of the project are quite large and I'll let Gazardo talk about, who's the landscape architect, about the trees along Branston, which is what you're concerned with.
Hi, Caroline Burglin with Gazardo Partnership, Landscape Architects. So, the, the trees along Industrial are the large, larger oak trees and the reason for that is because we have the space for that between the street and the building. And in reference to the trees along Branston, they aren't more narrow in columnar. And if you notice, we did talk about setbacks and how much space that we have available. The space on Branston is just too narrow in order to have larger oak trees and so therefore, we look at the trees of being able to survive long-term and the oaks are just not a good choice for that along Branston.
And so, is there another choice for a taller tree along there?
Uh, there, there could be, yeah, but I think what we have chosen right now is an appropriate tree for that space, because it's evergreen, it's columnar, and it'll grow in to, to screen that space, but also provide sort of a nice row of hedge tree along, along that edge of the building over there.
The primary issue is the root system. And so, if you, if you were to plant an oak there, it wouldn't grow to 80 feet like they will in the front, because the root system wouldn't be able to do it. And so, the, the other thing is the soils here are very challenging for large trees. That's why, you know, I hate to call this the Scott Marster's exhibit, but it is, because we've talked about trees a lot.
We told you to name it that, actually.
Yes, it's true. But we've gone through great lengths to identify trees that will survive and that will thrive in their respective locations. I don't think we can get to the 80-foot height on the, on the Branston side, but the trees will grow to 40 feet, which is roughly three and a half stories up the side of the building. So, it's, it, it's pretty, pretty significant.
Because it said 60.
Well, I'll have to look at the exhibit, oh, did I say 40? Well, it said 40 to 60, right? So, I'm, I'm being conservative, but...
I tried to be a little more towards the taller side. The other question that I had for you is, when we had discussions, you said that the trees were going to be larger boxes, but it seems like the, the larger, more than 24-inch boxes are the little trees that are in the centerpiece and not necessarily the ones along the street.
The ones, the, the PD, hang on, let me figure out which one we're talking about here.
All of those are 24-inch box trees, which is what I put in front of my house and it was, you know, eight feet tall when I started.
24-inch oak. How tall is a 24-inch oak?
10 to 15 feet tall.
So, they're 10 to 15 feet tall going in.
And so, how long is it going to take to get to...
To what?
50 feet, 60 feet.
60 feet, 30 years it'll take to get there, but I think within the closer future, within 10 to 15, you'll see a significant growth, probably to about 20 feet.
So, we're really looking 10 to 15 years before we see significant growth of these trees? That's what you just said.
I mean, there's only so much you can predict on a tree species, but oaks, because they'll, you know, they grow as how they would like to, but...
So, what you're saying is trees grow slowly?
Yeah.
Is, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Because I'm willing to accept that as a fact.
Bushes are an alternative. Bushes grow quicker than trees. Trees go slower than bushes, I believe.
Width and height, right? And so, because of the density of trees, because we've put so many, the purpose of that was to get to a width that would be appropriate so that we could screen as maximum as possible, as quickly as possible. But, you know, we, we, we can't help with the height anymore than we are by planting, you know, 10 to 15-foot trees out of the gates. But you will, if you look at the density of the plantings, why were 80% more than required? Why, you know, so, 80 trees are required, where 150. And so, if you look at that density, especially along Industrial and Branston, you'll see it's very dense planting and for the purpose of that is so the width of the canopies will connect as quickly as possible.
What else was I going to say? So, where are the trucks coming from and going to? I, I saw the lines, they, they go north, they go south.
Are we talking about dirt?
The dirt haul.
Okay. Okay, let's, let's go through that real quick. It's, okay, so, site access route, site exit route, okay? So, the, I don't know what color that is, let's call it blue. The, the blue, they will leave the project, if they're going northbound, they will go down to Whipple and take the northbound entry. Now, the majority, now, let me say caveat here, the majority of the areas where we think the dirt will get dumped will be southbound. We don't know that for sure. It dumps except dirt at different times, they accept contaminated dirt at different times, and so, it's a little bit out of our control. But if they're going northbound, they have to take Whipple. If they're going southbound, they'll turn on Britton and immediately access the freeway. If they're returning to the project and they're coming from the north, they'll take Whipple and, uh, excuse me, coming from the north, they'll take Britton, and if they are coming from the south, they will take Whipple. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you, you're not really sure exactly where and that's why it looks like they're going both north and south?
We think it will be, well, first of all, there will be different types of soil coming off this, because this is a contaminated site and, for example, non-contaminated dirt cannot necessarily go to the same place that contaminated dirt can. And so, we're not sure exactly where it'll go, but we think that most of it will end up going southbound. But see, some dumps, for example, stop accepting dirt for months at a time. And so, then you have to find a dump that will take the dirt.
And, this is a question for staff, has that been put in as a condition of the, the fact that the trucks can't use Holly Street? Has that been put in as a condition of, of approval? Or is that just something that the developer has put in his presentation? And I want to make sure that it's actually put in the conditions.
It's not expressly said and should be added as a condition.
Okay.
What is that? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm taking notes.
On the grading and dirt haul certificate...
Yeah.
The planning commission should add a condition that they cannot use Holly.
Holly Street.
Okay.
That, that way it makes it, because the... That way it makes it, because the route is on here, but I think it's the planning commission's intent to be very clear, so I would add the condition.
All right. Another condition that I think we should add is a sign on the site for a phone that's accessible 24 hours. We've done that, and I didn't see it in there, and it may actually be in there.
Number to call if there's an issue.
The number to call if there's a complaint.
It's in there.
It's in there?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe I missed it.
It'll be Dave's home cellphone number.
650-892-8379. I found out it's on the city's website. Shuttles, and I know it's part of the TDM process, but maybe Laura can explain this. And I know we talked about it last time of conditioning shuttles, but how do we find a way to strongly encourage that as the...
Wait, wait. I mean, you can ask whatever questions you want. I mean, my understanding from the last meeting was that they are putting, that they are agreeing, and as a condition, to participate in any shuttle program that the city establishes. And the reason why that is more beneficial than requiring them to provide their own shuttles is because then we will have competing shuttles, lots of people with shuttles, and not a comprehensive program. So, I mean, have I gotten any of that wrong?
That's accurate.
So, I mean, unless anybody else is interested in requiring them to do shuttles, I mean, I would suggest we table this because I, I mean, this is something we've talked about many times.
I just have an issue with the city getting into the issue, the city becoming the driving force behind shuttles.
But I mean, that's the city's decision. I mean, the city has decided that they want, and we can't control that.
But they did already agree to be a part of the city's program.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that's codified somewhere in our development agreement, correct?
It's a condition of the TDM plan, right?
The TDM?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they've made a commitment to doing that. And as a reminder, there's two questions in the Q and A related to shuttles and the restrictions on shuttles.
Yes, and I understand the restrictions. I was trying to push in the direction of the project having a shuttle, and the eventual tenants working together to have a shuttle instead of the city being put into a situation where it is now the driving force behind the shuttles rather than the developer itself. That's where I'm going.
Does anyone else want to...
I think I understand why you're leaning towards that, but I don't know that that's the best solution, actually.
And I just, I mean, are there three votes for that?
I understand what you mean.
I mean, is there another vote for it? Okay.
I'll give you the example of the hotel, okay, is going to have a shuttle as part of its develop, as part of its project, okay? And so this is a much larger project, but is, and I assume that they're going to have a shuttle, but it's not part of the project itself.
I think in this project, though, I trust the reason that city staff wants to do a coordinated shuttle in part because it's more complicated than a hotel shuttle that would generally just go to the airport or go downtown. Am I missing something? But I under, believe me, I understand your concern, Scott, and I'm not, I'm not in any way trying to downplay it. I feel like, in this particular case, I feel like the city plan might be a better alternative.
Okay. And the last thing before we sort of talk about the conditions and everything is, on Attachment 6, you might want to change it to remove soils rather than remove souls on the site.
There might be some soils there, too. I recognize the intent, but I thought, you know, the wording might mean something. So, so can I bring Mr. Crabbe up real quick?
Sure.
Mr. Crabbe?
Mr. Chairman, you may want to open public comment again.
I specifically asked whether I could do this.
I'm sorry. I believe the commission closed the public comments.
Okay, well...
I'll reopen it then.
Since you closed it.
Reopen it.
I move to reopen the public hearing.
Seven.
Can I have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Cherokee Terrace?
Yes.
So, Mr. Crabbe, I brought you up here solely because I value what you have to say, and you put a ton of time in these projects, and I really appreciate it, and I want to make sure that I haven't missed something that you, and I also want to say, I want you to tell me whether there are any improvements that you believe can be made to the project that we haven't already discussed. And so, one, I loved your idea regarding the reduction of parking. I've spoken to city staff. City staff has made very clear to me they believe that there's the appropriate amount of parking. So I am not going to, although I think that a discussion is always helpful, I don't want to waste folks' time. City staff has indicated they believe that the appropriate amount of parking at the site. You've referenced the bike parking. I think that's covered because of the ability to bring the bikes into the facility, but if you disagree, I'd love to hear what you have to say about that.
I can't remember exactly on that. I think it was, you were providing a certain minimum number of parking, bike parking spaces where you're not.
Yes, so they're providing 152, and you wanted more, but it seemed to me that the 152 was enough in light of the fact that the users of the property are actually allowed to bring, in fact, are required to be allowed to bring their bikes into the facility.
In that regard, I agree with that. That's fine, yeah.
You talk about shuttles, and we've covered shuttles. You talk about the 5% of electric charging stations, they're providing those. You talk about the water efficiency landscaping and trees, they're providing that. You talk about the including gray water infrastructure and landscape architecture. They added that, which is fantastic. You talk about bird-friendly design. We're going to cover that. I think that might be all of your recommendations, but I want to make sure that we didn't miss any of them.
No, I think that's it. You know, and I'm disappointed that we can't talk about the parking thing, but the other thing I wanted to bring up is just the general concept that the city really should be looking at, a commercial impact fee or something to ameliorate the problems that these kind of developments are going to create in terms of housing.
And I think the city is actually doing that right now, aren't we?
Yes.
I was hoping that my proposal would be a way to kind of do that without kind of getting into the formality of it, but if the staff is going to insist on the 1,500s, nothing I can say.
I understand. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
A.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Cherokee Terrace?
Yes.
So as far as conditions, I would like to include the bird-safe design condition. Do I have three votes for that?
You do.
Okay. I am happy to include the cannot use Holly condition, although I just want to observe for a moment. I get it. Like, I know that we've been doing this. I know that folks are really concerned about Holly. I personally think that, in this particular instance, it's a terrible policy because we're basically making these trucks drive further to go up to Whipple, so there's going to be more traffic on the road. And, you know, even worse, and you know, this is like something that kind of drives me crazy. I mean, the reason why traffic is so bad on San Carlos Avenue is because Belmont and San Carlos can't get along well enough to come up with a solution to it. And here, we're sending traffic into Redwood City. So, you know, what is Redwood City going to do? Well, they're going to say, oh, we're building something, we're going to send it down to Holly. I mean, I think it's a terrible policy, and I think that if we limited it to commute hours and allowed, and allowed them to use that very small portion of Holly when it was not commute hours, that would be better policy, but I'm not going to push it. I just think it's, I think it's crazy.
So let me say a couple of things. One, most of the trips, according to Michael, are going to go south, so they're actually not going to use Holly Street anyway. They're going to actually use Britain Avenue going south. The second issue is that you're now running contaminated soil right next to a residential neighborhood, okay?
Yeah, well, now we're going to do it in Redwood City.
No, we're not.
Yeah, technically, yes. Alphabet streets.
Driving right by.
The alphabet streets are all residential.
We're going to be running it down Britton.
No. Look, again, I'm not going to belabor it, but we are running the contaminated soil past more housing in Redwood City than we would be running it in San Carlos. But again, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna belabor, I just don't, I think it's, anyway.
I get your point, David, but...
But it's fine. I'm gonna, I'm gonna add it.
What about, what about just, I mean, just that exchange, right? I mean, I think that the problem in Holly is basically from Industrial up to El Camino, but, I mean, the exchange at the freeway is a really a problem.
That's all they need, and that's what we're preventing them from use.
Well, I guess I don't have a huge problem with them using that part of the exchange, and most of the congestion is basically going up...
Well, that's all they want to use, is they want to be able to enter the highway at Holly if they want to go north.
So they've laid out the proposed hauling route? Are you saying that we should look at a different alternative, or...
I'm just saying that I'm going to go ahead and make the recommendation.
You know, I'm sorry you brought it up. I don't think we're being a good corporate, we're not being good community citizens if we're pushing our traffic to another city.
That's fine. If you agree with me...
I do agree with you.
Then if there's one more person that agrees with me, I will just not add the condition that they cannot use Holly. Is there another vote for that? And I'll phrase it a different way. What if the condition was you cannot use Holly during commute hours?
That's better.
Well, do I have three votes for that?
Can I ask Michael a question? Contaminated soil, which direction is it going to go? Is it going to actually go south and use Britain where it doesn't go by a residential area at all? Or is it going to go, is it going to eventually go north?
There, it is most likely that the soil will go to the south. However, it is possible, if dumps to the south are not accepting that soil, that it could go north.
But in most cases, the expectation is that it's going to go on Britain Avenue?
That is our hope, yes.
Okay.
I would, I'll give you a 70/30. How's that?
And that's why the idea of no Holly Street makes sense, is...
Well, no, I mean, we acknowledged that there's, that we're going past residential in Redwood City, and we chose that as a better option for obvious reasons. We chose that for, to keep traffic off Holly because it's a very sensitive intersection.
I mean, Whipple's not exactly a freewheel and interchange either. I mean...
So I, again, if the, if the motion were to add as a condition, because this is a new condition, right? The cannot use Holly was going to be a new condition. If the condition was instead cannot use Holly during commute hours, would I have three votes?
You would have my vote.
Okay, then that's what I'm going to do. So...
Just quick clarification on that one, real quick, because, so you're saying in addition to the dirt hauling timeframe that we're laying out, a different timeframe for going through Holly?
Nope.
Because that's another discussion we have to have, because if we're going to narrow down timeframe, we have more trips, we have a longer, a longer time for this, for the dirt hauling.
We're not affecting, we're not affecting in any way when they can haul. All we're doing is, and if you remember, we were told that if we wanted to completely prohibit the use of Holly, that we had to include a new condition that they cannot use Holly. And all I'm saying is that I would modify that to be cannot use Holly during commute hours. They can go the other way.
And now you're slicing it all kinds of different ways because I'm going to come back and I'm going to say, and you can't do it on weekends, okay? Because now it's 9:00 in the morning, there might be people sleeping, you're running past a residential area.
And instead, they're going to run against a residential area, a larger residential area in Redwood City.
You're arguing something that wasn't asked for there. I think they're Monday through Friday anyways.
No, they aren't. They're seven days a week.
They're Monday through Fridays, is what it's proposed.
They're seven days a week.
The table gives you alternatives. If they had it only Monday through Friday, it would be a longer dirt haul process, so it would be five months versus three months, if I'm reading the...
Why don't we let Michael Fields, since he clearly knows the answer to that question, and he's itching, answer it?
Okay, so in the draft conditions, in the grading and dirt haul certification, so I'm on Attachment 5, Condition Number 11. What's in the draft is 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and it does include 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday, and no hauling allowed on holidays. So if the commission wished to allow hauling on Holly, I think it would be appropriate for that to be from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday only. No weekends and no holidays. They don't expect to do hauling on the weekends, but we preserved a little bit of flexibility within the conditions if they might have some hauling, do you know what I mean? That would speed things up.
The time analysis was based off of the five days.
And I'm fine, I got it. I can do that. That's not a problem. I got it.
Let's add the additional piece to that, that if the option is available whenever possible, you, and there's contaminated soil, that Britain is the primary alternative.
To extent feasible.
To extent feasible.
All right, fine. Mr. Field was nodding his head in the affirmative. So then there is, there is the recommendation, and this is not a condition, but the recommendation that Mr. Marsters would like to make that require, that the city, the city changed the development agreement to require that the, that the money be used for traffic mitigation on the east side.
It's for traffic mitigation and for maintenance of public infrastructure.
Okay. I am happy to add that recommendation to my motion. I am not in favor of it, so are there three votes in favor of that recommendation?
So we're saying take out the part that has to do with parks?
Basically, take away the flexibility from the city to choose between the two ways of spending the money.
We're only talking about the 750,000.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
I feel a little bit at a disadvantage because, of course, I wasn't at every, every greater east side public meeting, and I, so Scott, I'm going to have to rely on you. I don't know, does everybody in the greater east side agree that that's how the money should be spent? I'm getting the indication that they don't agree.
It doesn't sound like that, and that's why the and/or was there, right?
I think that the issue here is that the money that's there can be used anywhere in the city rather than...
Rather than in the east side.
Rather than address the issue of dealing with the traffic through the residential neighborhood.
I don't think that's right. I think that it's, has to be used on the east side for one of two reasons, either parkland or the, or the traffic improvements.
So let's ask staff. Is that the intent?
I'll have to look at the language really quick. But I think so.
So the intent is to use one of, that in one of two locations in, on the east side, either as part of a park or part of, because that's not the way it reads.
So while staff is, are you ready? While staff's looking at that, are there any other conditions that folks want to add?
Well, I was concerned about just doing a study and the, of the impact in the residential area, and making a recommendation that they do a study of the impact in the residential area.
Okay, I can add that. I know that you have at least one vote for that. Is anyone else?
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
I agree with that.
Okay. I can do that. Any other...
I think that's perfect.
Any other recommendations?
I'm happy with the project. I think it's a great project. I like the design. I like the building. What I'm trying to do is to just take care of what I perceive as impacts to the residential community over there.
Absolutely. Any other recommendations?
No, I just want to be clear. So, Shannon, you recommended that we study the traffic patterns in the east side, which is something that I know we both brought up earlier.
Not commercial, but the residential.
The residential. Okay, so would that, so then are we looking at two recommendations or one?
I thought it was just one.
Got it.
To study traffic. Is it limited to this project, or just study traffic impacts in the residential neighborhoods of the east side?
Honestly, that should be a separate recommendation outside of this project that should be made by the planning commission.
To the city council.
Simply to the city council. And it shouldn't be tied to this project.
It's a recommendation anyway, but, okay.
You want this taken out, then, if we want to?
We can do it as part of the project.
Well, if we don't do it as part of the project, the Brown Act wouldn't let us do it tonight. So, do you want to do it tonight, or do you want to do it later?
Yeah, let's do it as part of the project.
Okay, there you go. Sorry. So, I shouldn't run over the city attorney.
The attorney, just our place over here.
Sorry about that.
It's odd, right? I mean, it's a clock ticking, come on.
So, any other recommendations?
I'll put them on a timer.
I think we're waiting for the answer from staff.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it says anywhere in the jurisdiction.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Okay. I have no problem adding a recommendation that, that, it's the 750?
Yeah.
Okay. That the 750, that the development agreement be modified to require that that 750 be spent on the east side. I have no problem making that.
And giving the staff flexibility, whether it's used in parks or whether it's used to address traffic mitigation.
Yeah, I'd like to give them that flexibility.
I can live with that, too.
That works.
Okay. Any other recommendations?
No, I have some comments when we get ready to vote.
Any more conditions of approval?
No.
No. Okay. I'd like to make a motion. Would I have the conditions of approval to set the PD? I wouldn't add it to one, right? Oh, or would it be to, would it be the second motion or the third motion?
The added condition related to birds and the condition related to grading and dirt haul should go within the...
Three.
Third motion.
Okay. All right. And how do I change soils to soils? That was also in three.
We'll take care of that, yes. You may wish to include your recommendation in the, regarding the development agreement within the second motion. So, the first motion would be related to the resolution for SEQA. The second motion would be the resolution related to the plan development.
Okay.
So, you could put your recommendation to council there.
Okay.
The third motion is related to all of the approvals and certificates within your authority, so that's where the conditions would go.
Okay. So, I move that we adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt the mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program. I further move...
Sorry. Reminder to the commission, we'll have to do these one by one.
Two?
Yep.
All right. Okay, fine. Adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt the mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
I move that we adopt a resolution rec, when do you want to make your comments?
How about, how about right after you say all this?
All right. Adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance approving the plan development plan and accompanying zoning map amendment to rezone the subject site from general, commercial, industrial, GCI zoning district to plan development, PD zoning district, and further recommend that the city council attempt to negotiate, or I should say, the city attempt to negotiate with the developer to modify the development agreement to require that the $750,000 earmarked to parks and/or traffic improvements be spent in the east side, and further recommend that the city utilize the traffic impact funds generated through the, the development agreement to study traffic impacts of development in the residential neighborhoods of the east side of San Carlos.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion or comments?
Yes, I just have a couple of quick comments. Thank you. First, because I know that my line of questioning may have seemed a little aggressive in the first place, I wanted to make sure to acknowledge a couple of things from the development and the developer that many people in the public had said. I think you get a sense, after working with developers and being on the planning commission for a while, which developers are looking for a win-win and which ones are looking out for number one. And I just wanted to say thank you. I think you guys did an excellent job in trying to make a win-win for San Carlos, and I'm really excited about the project. I think from the landscaping, from the hardscape, from the building design, the environmental cleanup, the environmental usage, energy usage, water usage on the site, I think it's, it's definitely a good, a good benchmark for what we should expect from developers coming into the city. So, thank you. I also had read an article recently contrasting some of the bets made by certain cities in our region, San Jose and Santa Clara. San Jose had made some bets a number of years ago on residential housing, and that being their primary driver in development. And Santa Clara had made some different bets on office space, and there have been, there have been significant positive benefits to Santa Clara because of that, despite their smaller population, and I'm excited that we are making a similar bet in San Carlos. Thank you for indulging me, Jesse.
And then, actually, if I could, you for stealing my thunder, I want to echo that. It's been a pleasure to work with Mr. Field and Wendy Hill. I mean, they, they've made changes to their development after our last meeting. They either made changes or they explained why they couldn't. It was refreshing, and thank you.
I'm not going to compliment him. I don't want to, he goes to get too much bigger. No, no, no. I would agree. We've dealt with a lot of developments. I mean, first of all, we haven't even approved this motion, but I guess this is a good time to talk about it since everybody else is... Yeah, it's, it's really refreshing, and I've told Mike that as well. Any obstacles that we've talked about or that the public has, has really brought up, I think that they've tried to mitigate everything that was possibly able to be mitigated. So, I would have to echo that, and I don't know if anybody else is going to...
It has been a pleasure talking with you.
And you've talked to them a lot.
Yes.
So, can we, can we have a roll call on that motion, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
I move that we approve the design review projected, protected tree removal permit and transportation demand management plan certificate, approve the tentative parcel map certificate, and approve the grading and dirt haul certificate with two added conditions. The first is that the building be designed to San Francisco bird-safe design guidelines, and to the extent that it's necessary to deviate from those guidelines, any deviations be designed in a way that function to similarly reduce risk to birds as approved by staff, that a condition be added that Holly cannot be used for dirt hauling during commute hours, excuse me, strike that, that Holly cannot, can only be used for dirt hauling between 9:00 and 4:00 on weekdays, and it may not be used on weekends or holidays, and that to the extent feasible, any contaminated dirt will be, will be transported to the south via Britton Avenue.
I believe that...
I think that's everything. Yeah, a second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Well, that concludes that item.
Congratulations, we got ourselves a Class A building, folks.
Not yet, not yet. City council, city council. Reports, correspondence, and general information report on recent city council actions. I think there's probably a couple updates since I watched the meeting on Monday.
I also watched the meeting, or at least the part pertinent, too.
Yes. Glad they listened.
Yes, thank you, Chair Gutierrez. The staff does have a report for the planning commission regarding, not necessarily on recent city council actions, but on upcoming city council requests from staff. As you recall, on June 6, staff brought forward a study session on the city's subdivision standards, as well as the development standards for single-family new home construction. The city council was set to have their own study session on July 11. But since the June 6 planning commission hearing, the city council has requested that staff bump up that study session with the council, and we are looking at a special hearing date for the council to bring up this subject matter. We're looking at either the 22nd, I believe, or the 24th of June. So, they have pushed that up quite a bit from July 11, and we will be letting the community know, given all the resource and social media tools that we have about this date. So, I would want, I wanted to take the opportunity to mention that during this public hearing as well.
And just to, so, they will be having a study session, and then from what I think I understand, watching the meeting, they will also have some guidance for us to take policy-driven action. Is that correct?
That's our understanding. I mean, it remains to be seen what kind of direction the council will give, but this particular matter was brought up for the purposes of having a discussion, and we'll see what the city council would like to direct staff to do in terms of next steps. And as part of that, the council has expressed a request that staff also bring up, along at the same time that we have the study session, language for an urgency ordinance that would prevent lot splits and subdivisions happening within the residential districts. That's something that staff has learned that the council would like to see, so we'll be bringing that forward along, at the same time that we have that study session. And that's all.
Thank you.
What about the, the action on the formula business?
They agreed to a new sub, sunset, right?
An extension to January, or?
Yeah, January, February. You know, it's sunset at that time, yes.
And a modification to second story only in San Carlos Avenue off, or San, second story to be pulled from, excluded, and San Carlos Avenue to be taken off of that awareness.
How about that? Okay. You did something.
It's done in five years today.
Planning commission comments or reports?
Yeah, I have one thing. I'd like to recommend that we have more than a couple days on these larger projects to actually review the documentation, because in order to do a thorough job, we need more than 48 hours.
Yeah, I mean, so, because it was a special meeting, they only needed 24 hours, but they can certainly provide it to us earlier to the extent it's available. The problem is, is that, or not the problem, but the Brown Act requires that it be provided to the public at the same time that it's provided to us. So, I mean, that, I'm sure they gave it to us as quickly as they possibly could, but I had the same thought.
Maybe we adjust everything to where we have a week. I don't know, this is the policy going forward, just adjust the calendar so, so we have a week notice, that would be nice.
I think we had a lot on our plate, and an accelerated timeframe for some of this stuff because of the vacation for city council. So, I would agree. I think that we've, we've always talked about that, and this was probably one of those rare occasions that we got it really short notice. Normally, we get it, you know, before the weekend and after the weekend review it, but I think this is kind of, this particular situation was an isolated, that situation, given the amount of work that we've been doing, probably a rare occurrence.
I would say that's correct, and staff also contemplated this particular issue, and in light of the study session, that was one of the reasons why we wanted to have the study session prior to the hearing. But, but point taken, and it's a reasonable request. We will, we can look into that.
And then, one last question. We have another meeting on the 20th. Are we going to get the packet tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
Correspondence, I guess just what was left on the dice. Planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects.
So, following up on Commissioner Marsters noted, the January, excuse me, the June 20th upcoming planning commission hearing, which is this coming Monday, items on the agenda that I will confirm for the commission is, first, we'll start off the meeting with the election of officers. It's that time of year for us to elect a new planning commission chair, a vice chair, and a member of the planning commission to serve as the residential design review committee chair. So, that will be first on the agenda, followed by four public hearing items. The first, which will be the continued item at 2115 White Oak Way, followed by the proposed new office space and substantial remodel for the 600 block of Laurel Street. And then, moving on to a request for a conditional use permit for a commercial and recreational entertainment use along Industrial, and concluded with Honda use permit. As the commission may have heard, the Honda has acquired additional parcels, and so we need to go back and modify their original use permit, so we'll conclude the meeting with that. And that's all I have.
What's the location of the new entertainment? What was the address on Industrial?
I believe it's 1119 Industrial Road.
Anything else? I think adjourned. Thank you.
All right.